Session. The board met in closed session earlier today and we discussed items with, we discussed items with our legal counsel with regard to labor negotiator, labor negotiations, anticipated litigation and potential threat to public services or facilities pursuant to government code section 54957A. At this time, I'd like to state that on our agenda for today's meeting item, we are going to, with the consensus of the board, which I'll ask for in just a moment, I would like to switch, please, the items 8.01 with 7.01 so that we will have our board discussion approving the reopening plan and following that a resolution if the opening, after our discussion of that opening plan. Do I have board consensus to change the order of business here today?
Yeah.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you very much. So at this time, we will go into item 6.01 correspondence. At the time, the agenda was posted and published, the following official correspondence had been received, and I'm just going to go through quickly the names and the topics that were presented, and also state that all of this correspondent was, we, speaking on behalf of the board, which I believe I can do in this circumstance, we read all correspondence sent to us, we take it, certainly take it into serious consideration as we think about the decisions that lie before us. Official correspondence today, to announce today, Erin Latham, Concerns for Fall, Robert's Family, Plan B1, B2, and C Considerations, Deborah Perman with the subject, Are You Ready?, Laura Fields, Questions for Thought on Reopening, Candace Winstead, School reopen Plan B Concerns, Marilyn Sang, Comment on SLCUSD Reentry Plan, Deborah Perman, Enrollment Numbers, Sherry Love, Parent Letter Regarding Fall Guidelines Proposal, Raleigh Delk, Curriculum Needs to be Changed, Simon and Rachel Kavesti, Virtual Learning Option Program, Carrie Kitamura, Plans for Reopening, Stan Yoshinobu, Plan C is the Only Safe Choice with an Addendum, Ellen Adamson, Plans for Reopening School and IEPs, Heidi Foster, 2020-2021 School Year, Simon and Rachel Kavesti, Second Letter, Virtual Learning Option Program, Kristen Goutrie, Reopening Plan for Fall 2020, Nicole Keiker, Concerning Your Decisions, Beth Marino, Agenda Items 7.01 and 8.01, Christine Crozier, Reconsideration, Erin Lynn, Decision for Distant Learning, Erin Latham, Plan C, Dulce Maria, Questions for School Opening, Kristen Dennis, SLCUSD, Decisions for School Reopening. And all of this correspondence has also been attached to the agenda if members from the public wish to, wish to take a look at what we've been getting. Next, we will go to, of course, public comment, and at this point in the agenda, the board will take public comment on items of district interest. We will listen, but we may not engage in or take action on items not listed on the agenda. We are not, typically, we reserve the right to limit public comment. We are not doing this today because of the, the nature of this meeting. However, we will strictly enforce our three-minute rule. Those wishing to address the board have three minutes in which to do so. You may not give your time to somebody else or take, speak more than one time on a particular subject. The, we have a timer who will be letting us know when the time is up. We also provide the opportunity to submit, submit written comment that you would like to be read into the record, to have read into the record, and the way to do that is to email it. It's set out in the agenda, the appropriate ways. The email address is district@slcusd.org, and then please identify that you wish to have your public comment read. If we receive it in the right amount of time, I will read it. And there is also a public comment request form. Again, if you, any written public comment that I receive, it has a limit of 450 words. We've received some that are longer than that, and I will stop when I reach 450 words. So we will carry on. Another thing we do, and Jeremy, are you, are you ready to indicate our, what you do back there behind the scenes?
Yeah, I'm Jeremy Kelch. I'm the IT Director at San Luis Coastal. First and foremost, if you'd like to speak today, please click on the participants icon on the bottom of your Zoom window right there, and a side window will appear, and you'll have options, and just raise your hand. And if you look, Ms. Emily Capolano has raised her hand already, and that's how we can see who would like to speak. So please do so, and then we'll call you upon, you know, first order, and Ellen will acknowledge you. Anything else I missed?
The other pieces, if you, in the audience, those listening, if you agree or disagree with something you're hearing, Jeremy, you want to talk about where they find the thumbs up and thumbs down?
Yeah. So if you hear people during a public comment that you agree with, please go ahead and hit the thumbs up, thumbs down. It's right there next to the, raise the hand icons. And so after each public comment, I'll list, you know, 10 thumbs up, you know, two thumbs down. So it's a good way for us to see, you know, if, where people agree and whatnot, or disagree with a certain subject matter.
Do you mean the snow buttons?
No, there's an up-down. You should see the thumbs up, thumbs down. I also read off yes, no, and I just add it the same way. So go ahead.
Thank you. And then the other, the other thing I would request is that if you hear your topics addressed, we would very much appreciate it if we not have a lot of repetition because the board also needs to be able to have our own discussion about these topics. So that's the purpose, a real advantage of the thumbs up and thumbs down.
And then I'm just putting it off here.
It'll help us know where people stand and without the need to have a lot of repetition. So at this point, I am going to read the written comments and just, as always, I apologize for any mispronunciations of names. So first, I have Jenny Chisini, but there also, my understanding is that if you are here, you would want to speak in person, and if that's the case, please let us know, and I will hold this comment. You can speak after I read the other comments. I'm looking to see if.
I did not see online.
Okay, then I will read this. My comment begins with two questions. One, how do you define case rate? And two, why is the district using a county case rate to determine district actions? Case, case rate is the current recommendation that if 283 or more people in the entire county, 0.1% of population are considered an active coronavirus case, haven't yet been counted as recovered, then we will deny our children in school education, let alone all of the repercussions of that denial. I repeat that if 283 out of 283,000 people have coronavirus, then no school, regardless of whether or not any of them are sick, hospitalized, et cetera. When the state has six metrics for measuring coronavirus stability, why are we using only one? County metrics, the North County, well outside of our district, has had higher COVID-19 numbers since the start. Why are we looking at the entire county's case rate? I'd further ask, haven't San Luis Obispo's cases been skewed to assisted living facilities and college students, to demographics not heavily tied to elementary kids or their families? My family and I have taken COVID-19 very seriously. We have a healthy dose of fear of contracting and spreading this disease, but we also recognize the need for children, including ours, to go back to school. I would expect to hear of school closures under much more dire circumstances than those which I'm currently hearing. What I think I'm hearing is that the district will not reopen in the fall if the entire county continues to fail the one and only metric it is currently failing based on the state's six metrics, i.e. if 283 out of 283,000 people in our county have coronavirus, then no school, regardless of whether any of those people are sick or if any of them live in San Luis Obispo. If I am incorrect, then please, please explain where I'm wrong. Keith Humphrey. Jeremy, are you hearing the feedback? Or am I only, the only one hearing it? Okay.
Lock down the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Ellen, give me one quick second. I may have to lock down, need to unmute phones. Hold on one second.
Please stand by.
Hey Ellen, if you could do me a quick favor, can you please unmute your, your computer right there for me? Thank you very much. I just locked down the meeting so nobody can unmute themselves. So board members, if you need to unmute, just raise your hand, and I'll go ahead from there. I apologize. Go ahead.
Thank you. Keith Humphrey, As a fellow educator, I know the gravity of the decisions before you and have been impressed with the way the teachers, my children, have supported them during the spring. My comments are around the goal of education, which is to reduce the stratification that exists in society. As you make decisions about the fall and future terms, I hope that as you consider health and safety, you also make decisions through the lens of reducing stratification. This means not leaving the most vulnerable behind or assuming that the way that the vulnerable special education students can adapt to virtual education in the same way that able-bodied children can. One of my children is a special education student, and he does not respond to online-related education. We are, we were grateful for the excellent work of his teachers, CJ Davis and Wendy Christner, who worked to create curriculum for him that was not online in the spring. He would still meet with teachers online, but was mostly nonverbal through these experiences, and they were mostly just online conversation and not instruction. I also noticed that he was regularly one of the only students who participated, giving me concern about the ability of his peers to keep up. He is back an extended school year in person and is flourishing. The class sizes are smaller, and the human interaction and consistency of schedule are critical factors in his education, factors that affect all students, but your special education community the most. You do have the opportunity, should you elect to go to Plan B2 Hybrid, to carve out special circumstances for your special education community and have them be at the school site every day and avoid a risk of violating the ADA. Should Slow Coastal be able to support in-person instruction in the fall and subsequent terms, I encourage you to bring your special education students back full-time. They are already stratified enough in society and hope that this moment does not put them further apart. Thank you and best of luck as you make your decisions. Magnolia Stork, After listening in to yesterday's board meeting, I wanted to write in despite of not, despite, I wanted to write in despite not being able to, during the meeting, listening to the requirements to be met in order to reopen, six feet of distance, et cetera, I questioned why we are spending so much energy working on Plan B, which frankly seems impossible on both the practical and fiscal level, when it seems obvious that we are going to end up having to move to Plan C at some point anyways. Wouldn't our resources be better spent preparing everyone for Plan C now so that families and teachers can begin preparing for it? I do not wish to unenroll my children from their schools and lose our spots there. If the default starting point for everyone was online, we could begin working to figure out how we will manage it and possibly even find ways for limited, safe, in-person meetings along the way, be it for labs or tutoring or for at-risk students. I can't understand why we don't start with everyone home and then work to fill in the ways that we can safely and reasonably be together. I appreciate your thoughtfulness and for the opportunity to participate in the discussion. I found all of the public comments, up until I had to log off at 2:00 PM for another Zoom meeting, to be very good. I imagine that there are a good number of families that could manage online as a lesser substitute until such point that it is safer to be together, but that are not wanting to unenroll from their home school. If we could remain at our school but online, it might allow you to better gauge which students really need to be accommodated on campus, allowing you a smaller number to manage in a safe and reasonable way. Thomas Shelley.
Hey, really quick, Ellen, that was, just to give the thumbs up, thumbs down. No worries, no worries. It's 31 thumbs up and six thumbs down. I apologize.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll remember. Thomas Shelley, I have two children with IEPs, Jaden Lynn, grade seven, and Kayden Shelley, grade five. As of this new school year, the level of attention that they need to stay at grade level, unfortunately, I cannot provide at home. It needs to be done by, by a professional, someone that has been trained specifically for their learning needs. I understand the need for safety for you and for my family, but at what cost? If my children cannot attend school, I fear they will never recover from this. Jeremy?
Yep, that is eight thumbs down, and it's going, changing quickly, eight thumbs down and 16 thumbs up.
Thank you. Paul Balladow, Thank you for considering my comment. Given that I am now writing this comment while parts of our economy are closing once again due to rising COVID-19 numbers, my family and I would very much appreciate a hybrid in-person, online option of school attendance for our elementary school students, similar to that of our middle and high school students. It's difficult to decide whether to go 100% in-person or 100% online, when it appears that a hybrid option would ensure quality education and increase physical distancing when compared to 100% in-person. Thus, I recommend to the board rule in favor of the option of hybrid in-person, online learning for elementary school students.
Yeah, it's going to be 18 thumbs up and 16 thumbs down.
Thank you. Erin Lynn. If the number of cases in Slow County are such that the district will reopen with Plan C through winter break, then why not hold off on the district distant learning option until after winter break as well? What would be the difference for a second grader receiving education through Plan C versus the distance, district distance learning? Many other districts are allowing parents to decide on virtual learning on a semester basis instead of requiring a year-long commitment. A lot of parents are struggling with this right now since we cannot predict what the world will look like in January. Since August 3rd is the date for both decisions, it makes sense to just have everyone on Plan C, and then if it looks like schools can reopen with in-person learning after winter break, then you can give the option of signing up for the district distant learning at that time.
It's going to be five thumbs down and 37 thumbs up.
Jessica Gami, Reopening our school should not be a political decision but a practical one. Since the start of the COVID pandemic, there have been zero deaths in kids ages 0 through 17 years old in California. Studies in France, Switzerland, and China show that 95% of transmission of the virus occurs in adults, concluding that children are not significant transmitters of the virus. I understand families having members with underlying health conditions and compromised immune systems not wanting to send their kids to school, and fortunately, there is an option for those families with distance learning. As for our family, we absolutely want to get back to in-person schooling. My daughter, who is going to be a junior this year, has always been an honorable student and enrolled in multiple AP classes. While she was able to navigate most of the online curriculum, she was very frustrated with math, saying that she was going to have to relearn the entire year of math once they go back to real school. This is not okay. Our kids are suffering far more academically, mentally, and physically than from COVID. Please don't take away their choice to go back to school this year. Thank you. Resources, cipher.ca.gov, Science Daily, Children rarely transmit COVID-19.
It's going to be 43 thumbs down, and then, hold on one second, I got to stop this video, and then it's going to be 16 thumbs up.
Elizabeth, With so many contingencies in place to keep our children and teachers safe in school, it is counterintuitive to reopen in the fall under Plan B. It's apparent that much consideration has gone into each of the reopening plans, and our family appreciates the dedication to detail, but as our county continues to increase restrictions on businesses and mask-wearing in public, we should be focusing on keeping children and teachers out of a classroom. Our children are preschool and elementary-aged and have had numerous notices sent home regarding exposure to lice over the years. How can our schools keep children safe from a virus when head lice cannot even be controlled? Additionally, teachers should not be made to be exposed to nor responsible for preventing the spread of COVID-19, nor should they be responsible for the socio-emotional issues that arise as a result. We love school and our teachers, but now is not the time to put everyone in classrooms together.
It's going to be 50, 60 thumbs up and 15 thumbs down.
Amanda Lethrow, Why is only the single metric of Slow County COVID-19 infection rates are at or below 100 positive cases per 100,000 residents being used? I believe this does not completely reflect the potential risk of COVID in our school district as it takes into account other cities. For example, Paso has had high counts, and I would hate to see our students not go back to school because of high cases in Paso, or the prison, or a senior care facility. The opposite could also be true. Cases may increase in Slow but be lower in other cities not in the district, maybe resulting in underestimation of risk. Additionally, the hospitalization rates and rates among children should be considered. Making a decision based on one metric is unwise, particularly given what is at stake. The district also needs to determine what is an acceptable COVID risk. Maybe the district has but not articulated it to the community. It feels at times that the decision to open is based on trying to reduce the COVID risk to zero. This will not happen anytime soon, so what is the acceptable risk? While the 100 positives per 100,000 is an easy metric to calculate, it is a crutch for making a hard decision. The district must take a more nuanced approach to determine when in-person instruction will resume.
That's 33 thumbs down, 35 thumbs up.
Lisa Linval Aquino, Dear school board and Dr. Prater, my name is Lisa Linval Aquino, and I am a mother of a third and sixth grader in our district. I am also a physician and have a background in epidemiology. I greatly appreciate the thought and attention you have put into these plans and also that you have asked for community input. I initially was very supportive of returning to school in some capacity, assuming reasonable physical distancing could be achieved. However, in looking at our recent case numbers, I think it would be very difficult to do that safely. A particular concern to me is that you would allow students to take off their face masks in the classroom when six feet apart. We don't fully understand transmission of this virus, but do know that it can be transmitted without masks indoors, even if physical distancing is maintained. Masks are difficult to wear all day and breaks are needed, but the best time to take a break from them would be outdoors, not indoors. I am also concerned about our rising case numbers. At this point, it seems very unlikely we will meet the benchmark on August 3rd. I hope that you are also considering other metrics such as percent testing positive and hospitalizations, since our ability to test is no longer what it was, and we may begin to detect fewer cases that do not represent true levels of disease. The lack of available testing will also make tracing and testing within the schools a challenge. It saddens me to have to come to this conclusion. I am hoping that if schools do not reopen for in-person instruction in August, that we can find creative ways to bring students back this year for things like physical education and learning outdoors.
Yeah, so that's going to be 76 thumbs up and eight thumbs down.
Jim Dor, Thank you for all of your hard work and commitment to the families and employees of SLCUSD. Given the trajectory of the virus in our county, it seems unlikely that our schools will open as planned in mid-August. Rather than having two separate virtual schools, the official virtual school and the in-person schools going virtual, can we consider just having a single plan where all students remain enrolled in their current schools that will be taught virtually until at least winter break? This would be more efficient and will take, and would take care of concerns such as, will my child's ability to take their AP or accelerated classes depend on which option I choose? The hard work that has been done in developing plans A, B1, and B2 could be saved as we see how things look in a few months. Thank you.
Yeah, so that's five thumbs down and 58 thumbs up.
Thanks, Jeremy. Kevin Hadley, I have had cancer in my head for 20 years. I've had a lot done to my head. I'm incredibly pleased to be alive. I have a boy going into eighth grade who really wants to go back to school, primarily for social reasons. For health reasons, I don't want him to go, and for her own reasons, my ex-wife wants him to attend. Should he attend? Should he get COVID as a result? He may be threatening my life without even knowing it. Of course, I don't want COVID, and I really don't want my son to feel guilty for giving it to me. Please concentrate on online learning. More people are sick and more people are dying than the first time you close school. What makes it a good idea now? Please think beyond the kid and consider the teachers, employees, and the families.
That's 59 thumbs up, seven thumbs down.
Robin Friedman-O'Leary, Thank you all for your leadership and board service during this difficult time. I appreciate the great care and thoughtfulness that has gone into looking at the numerous options for reopening our schools. After reviewing the documents and carefully monitoring the infection rate of COVID-19 in our county, I would urge you to make the decision today to shift all schools in the San Luis Coastal Unified to distance learning. At this point, I believe it, believe it is inevitable that we will not make the threshold for less than 100 cases per 100,000 people in Slow County by your August 3, 2020 deadline to reopen schools. For the health and welfare of our community, we need to keep schools closed. For the sake of our faculty, staff, and students, we need to make the shift sooner rather than later. By making the decision on July 16, 2020, you are giving teachers and administrators more time to prepare and for students and their families to adjust. Teachers, our most valuable resource, need these precious two-plus weeks to plan. Please do not delay the shift to distance learning.
67 thumbs up, 11 thumbs down.
Alessandra Mattos, The infection rate of the past few weeks make it clear the pandemic is not under control. I don't understand how it is being considered bringing children back to a classroom if we are once again closing indoor activities. I am hoping that after the last news about closures and after watching our numbers grow, you will reconsider our plan for fall, going fully online, and keep our children home, unless, at least until it is deemed safe to have people indoors again. Neighboring counties and districts are doing so. We should follow their lead and give the teachers time to prepare for the inevitable.
Yes.
Got it, Jeremy?
Yep, I wasn't sure if you were done or not. It's 73 thumbs up and 15 thumbs down.
Christine Crozier, While I think the current plan proposed looks good, I think we need to reconsider starting the school year with distance learning due to the increasing numbers of COVID in our county. We pulled kids out of school with fewer cases this past spring. Our teachers and students are too important to risk their lives and the lives of their loved ones right now. The complications of what to do if a student, teacher, or staff member is exposed causes a lot of complications as well. It is the only way we can truly protect our students, teachers, and staff. It would also follow suit with other local school districts as well as other districts throughout our state. This shows that our students, teachers, and families are of the utmost importance. Please reconsider starting the year with distance, distance learning, and then progress to in-person school once it is safer for all. Thank you. Christine Crozier, Educator and Parent to Laguna and Slow High School Students.
Yeah, 70, 80 thumbs up and 12 thumbs down.
Jerusha Greenwood, My son and daughter are students at SLCUSD schools. My daughter is starting at Laguna Middle School, and my son will be starting fifth grade at Bishop's Peak this fall. While I'm concerned about the lack of social-emotional learning for my kids that in-person, on-campus education provides, I am also concerned for both their safety and the safety of the faculty and staff that are I am also concerned for both their safety and the safety of the faculty and staff at our schools. Choosing to go ahead with Plan A, B1, or B2 at any school as the number of COVID-19 cases continues to rise in the county is deeply irresponsible. The school district should be using this time to develop resources for online learning and for accommodating those families for whom online distance learning is a challenge and not figuring out how to create a safe physical space on campuses. As community spread in the county increases, it's clear that the plans to keep kids and their families as well as the faculty and staff at our schools and their families safe are pipe-threes. The only safe option is to keep kids, faculty, and staff in a distance learning setting until, one, a vaccine is developed, two, the county gets a handle on the rate of positive cases, gets better at contact tracing, or three, there are more resources to allow for a better plan to keep our kids safe if they have to be on campus. Safety on campus must go beyond increased cleaning protocols and optional face coverings. The best, safest in-person instruction is B2, in addition to required social distancing and face coverings. And the board has only discussed this in the context of secondary instruction. This is insufficient. I urge you to elect a safe, a distance learning approach, Plan C, until Slow County returns to a significantly flatter curve, a significant drop in the daily positive cases of COVID-19, and until the district has a better plan for keeping our kids safe at both the primary and secondary instruction setting. If we can't eat indoors at a restaurant, watch a movie in a movie theater, or go to a museum, how can we expect our kids, the faculty, staff, and their families to be safe with one hundred percent in-person instruction with safety protocols in place as they would be in restaurants, movie theaters, museums? Please vote for Plan C. It is a moral imperative.
That's eighty-three thumbs up and fifteen thumbs down.
Amy Adams. As a parent of fourth and sixth graders and a teacher in another district, I have spent my summer getting increasingly worried about school this fall. We have all seen the numbers in our county increase dramatically over the last month, and unfortunately, I don't think we are anywhere near the end of this. I fear for the safety of our children and the amazing teachers and staff. One person ending up hospitalized or worse due to going to school is one too many. May I ask you to please put the health and safety of our community first and begin the year with distance learning? Thank you.
It's sixty-five thumbs up, fourteen thumbs down.
Elena Ramos Peffley. As a parent of two secondary school-age students, we know as a family exposing them to eight hundred-plus people per day is an open invitation to bringing COVID into our homes. We cannot experiment or try a new in-class school year on our children. Teachers do not need to take a bullet for the sake of others' convenience. They are not childcare. It's not up to the teachers to balance the economy so people can work. They need protection. Keep our kids out of their classrooms. If you bring them back, the chaos after one student or teacher gets COVID will be worse than anything you are dealing with today.
Yeah, thirteen thumbs down and seventy-nine thumbs up.
Erin Elfent. The rapidly growing rates of COVID-19 in Slow County coupled with poor testing access and long wait times means it is dangerous to reopen our schools. We will see teachers, faculty, staff, parents, and grandparents and students infected, witnessing the high likelihood of death and disabling long-term medical problems. We will have reopened prematurely and will be culpable. Let's be on the right side of history and decide now to not reopen in 2020. This gives much-needed time to prepare. It is wrong to postpone this inevitable decision until August 3rd. Let's focus on improving distance learning on each school's campus so students get to learn with teachers they know and peers they have grown up with. The VLP is not a good option for all students as it worsens trauma to have school identity ripped away. Thanks for your hard work. Hi, Jeremy, it's all yours.
It is. It's gonna be twelve thumbs down and seventy-six thumbs up.
Ravell Pittman. For me, as a parent, the safety of our children and teachers should be the main priority and concern in making the decision to reopen the schools. If it can't be done without risk, then it should not be done at all. And I don't see how, without extra federal and state funds in the current state of our county, you can make the decision to open right now.
Twelve thumbs down, fifty-eight thumbs up.
Sarah McGraff. Though I have an elementary school student with special needs who is successfully included in a general education classroom and benefits enormously from interaction with his peers and face-to-face teaching, I absolutely do not feel comfortable at this point going back to school in person and believe that we should follow suit with districts who are deciding to start the year virtually. I believe the school district should concentrate its efforts on issues of equity for those students for whom this will prove more than challenging. Please make the decision to start virtually sooner rather than later so everyone can prepare. The situation in our county is worse than it was in March. My son's minuscule amount of speech therapy and OT is not worth the risk to his compromised Indian system.
Eleven thumbs down, eighty thumbs up.
Rani Shaw. Thanks to everyone who has worked hard on this. My only request is that the decision be made sooner than August 3rd for the plan that is decided on. This will then give everyone, teachers, staff, parents, caregivers, and kids, a chance to prepare sooner, giving everyone a chance to succeed in these unprecedented times.
Sixty-three thumbs up and five thumbs down.
Courtney Brogno. Concerning any school reopening plan, and with all due respect, I would like to see the board gather in person to discuss reopening rather than via Zoom. What message and behavior are you sending and modeling to parents and children when the board won't even get together in the same room or allow physical attendance by the public, given the current circumstances and the need to ensure the health and safety of the members, staff, and the public as a whole, while still actively discussing any face-to-face, modified or not, teaching model? With seventy-two new cases in Slow County and San Luis Obispo rated second in the county as of July 14, 2020, it makes no sense to me to reopen schools at all, especially when we close schools with minimal cases on March 16, 2020.
That's sixty-five thumbs up and fifteen thumbs down.
Leah Booker. At this point, it seems both prudent and inevitable that the district will be starting the school year in Plan C. I appeal to you to please make this decision official as soon as possible so that teachers and families may have the chance to prepare accordingly. Additionally, I have found the information regarding the distance learning option woefully lacking. What would a typical day look like? What is the time commitment? Will students be in Zoom sessions with the teacher for feedback? Will other DL students be in Zoom meetings as well to better foster a classroom setting? How will DL differ from Plan C? I eagerly await any further information you may have. Thank you.
Sixty-four thumbs up and eight thumbs down.
Ken Kahana. Members of the San Luis Coastal Board of Trustees, did you ever stop to think about this sentence in the board meeting notifications? Unfortunately, physical attendance by the public cannot be accommodated given the current circumstances and the need to ensure the health and safety of the members, staff, and the public as a whole. You are meeting via Zoom to decide the fate of countless faculty, staff, administrators, and my children for the 2021 school year because confirmed cases of COVID-19 in San Luis Obispo County continue to rise as well as the death toll. What makes the board think putting numerous people in one classroom is safe? Cal Poly, Questa, and Lucia Mar Unified School District have determined it is in the best interest of their students, staff, faculty, administrators, and the general public to teach online for the start of the 2021 academic year. Please explain why SLCUSD believes it is safe to return to the classroom. On Monday, July 13, San Luis Obispo County released the latest update for Slow County. They began closing establishments and/or placing restrictions on business, on businesses such as outdoor dining only. Will you be providing outdoor covered classroom areas for my children and your faculty and staff?
Yeah, it's seventy-seven thumbs up and nine thumbs down.
Amber Strohman. I think schools should start with Plan B or C, then move towards Plan A when the time is right. I do not want to unenroll in our homeschool sin-shimer, then do distance learning with teachers we do not know. I want to do virtual learning with staff from our homeschool. Familiar faces are comforting. We had a great experience with virtual learning and can provide our children with socializing encounters that we can regulate.
That's sixty thumbs up and five thumbs down.
Angela Nelson. Thank you for listening so clearly last week. There are core concerns you noted with words in your plan. However, the plan itself does not reflect those concerns. You note the safety of the students and staff as first in your concerns, yet Plan B does not show that as your priority. You maintained your existing plan. The truth still remains. We are learning more and more about how COVID-19 affects humans daily, especially all under age forty-four. The school district has a duty to provide a safe learning environment for all its students. From a virus standpoint, this is impossible at this time with Plan A or either Plan B version. There still is not sufficient time to sterilize between cohorts in Plan B. There is a significant population of students who are at risk at home and need to be served by the district as well. I do not see how a blanket approach is serving anyone's safety first. I propose, I propose Plan B changed to cohorts divided by days, Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, as was supported by parents last week. Additionally, a plan is in place for students who need school away from home if we are in Plan C. Finally, our teachers are not supported on how to teach distance learning or hybrids effectively. The reactionary stance and using what we have mentality has cost a lot of planning time this summer. It is not too late. You can still do that now. Apex is a poor online platform. It causes a hatred of education. Retention levels are low, and mental health has been proven to suffer in long use of it. Please do not make this your go-to for the distance learning. There are ways to teach online. Empower your teachers with that investment instead. Finally, this plan does not have the right to overwrite the vote last year that Slow High School remain on a trimester system. Regardless of Plan A, B, or C, Slow High School is required to remain on the trimester system according to the vote. Do not upend that situation further. Please go back to the drawing board on Plan B, listen, and heed the call from parents. Please enact Plan C through winter break to allow our scientists to learn more about COVID-19 without our children being the lab rats.
That is seventy thumbs up and eight thumbs down.
Joyce Seung. Dear SLCUSD Board members, adopt Plan C now. I support the recommendation that the reentry plan be based on the COVID-19 case rates in Slow County. Slow County has already surpassed one hundred positive cases per one hundred thousand residents, and it is unlikely this rate will go down by August 3rd. Furthermore, rapid tests and testing for asymptomatic individuals are not available currently in San Luis Obispo. Therefore, I urge you to make a decision at the July 16 board meeting to go with Plan C, distance learning at the start of the 2021 school year. It would be very helpful if staff and families had as much time as possible to prepare and plan for virtual learning instead of feeling like we are in limbo until August 3rd. I understand that Plan C will be quite a hardship for most working families, but it is truly for the health and safety of, safety of all our families and staff. Two, concerns with Plan B1. If and when the SLCUSD is able to implement Plan B, I have questions and concerns about B1 and the feasibility of it. A, will each elementary school actually have enough space for five to six additional classrooms? And does SLCUSD have enough funding and a staff pool to staff those additional classrooms? B, I am concerned that with classroom sizes of seventeen to twenty small children, elementary school teachers are forced to attempt to teach and support the social and emotional health of their students while also managing their safety in the classroom and during the transitions, as well as doing all the cleaning for this large number of students. And unlike previous years, teachers would not be able to count on each other for classroom support, nor have any parent volunteers to assist them during the day. C, please take into account the safety and mental health of our elementary school teachers and allow them to teach under Plan B2 while also looking into other childcare solutions. I think it is safe. Thank you for your consideration.
That's eighty-two thumbs up and six thumbs down.
Jane Buchanan. Thank you all for your continued time and efforts in the matter of return to school. I would ask that the board consider making a firm decision today to allow families and teachers to better plan for the beginning of the school year. Pushing off what appears to be the inevitable decision based on the current upward case trends for a couple more weeks does not make sense to me. I would also ask that the district and board consider distance learning options which provide structure but also options which allow flexibility. Many parents might be more interested in support using a more flexible homeschool model option rather than the more structured teacher-led option. Regardless, having a known plan helps families and teachers know how to move forward. Considering any kind of in-person learning model right now puts things very much up in the air, especially as it seems unavoidable that we would bounce back and forth without warning due to quarantine scenarios with six students, staff, and family members. Returning to in-person learning only when we can appropriately mitigate risk and expect a reasonably stable in-person model seems to be the best for students, teachers, and families, in my opinion.
Hold on one second. Let's see where we're at. We have seventy-eight thumbs up and four thumbs down.
Ashley Brown. The COVID numbers are too high. We don't have adequate testing available, and our schools don't have the funding needed to return safely. Our teachers and students should not be put in this high-risk situation. Our families will struggle with online schooling. Teachers want to juggle teaching their classroom students and their own children. But sadly, it is the only viable option. We must choose Option C. I ask that you vote now to move forward with Option C and give the teachers time to prepare robust lesson plans. Thank you for your consideration.
Eighty-one thumbs up and nine thumbs down.
Cindy Mayer. With the rising in COVID case numbers for the safety of our children, teachers, and staff, I would hope SLCUSD would decide to opt for distance learning now so that teachers and parents have ample time to prepare. We are watching other school districts opt for distance, distance learning locally and within the state north and south of us. So to calm nerves and give something to plan for, that is my written request. Thank you.
Seventy-five thumbs up, ten thumbs down.
Sherry Brown. I think it's safe to say that most of us want our children back at school for many reasons. The reality is there are too many unknowns, and asking teachers to potentially put their lives at risk is unacceptable. Most teachers cannot spend an entire day six feet away from all children that they encounter. We will not be able to monitor and keep children six feet away from each other either. The reality that all kids will wear masks and frequently wash their hands is not practical. Even though there is a low death rate, we are still learning of the long-term effects of COVID-19. My child has asthma, and so I may be more concerned than others. I am also a teacher. If I had to return to the classroom, there's a high likelihood that I could bring this virus home to my child. It is not fair to ask our teachers, our classified staff, our children, or our families to return to on-campus learning until we are confident that COVID-19 is under control. We have the resources to cover staff who may be out for two to three weeks or more at a time, and there are protocols put in place to keep as many people safe as possible. I know this is a very divisive issue, and there are many differing opinions. The health and safety of our students and staff should be the priority.
Eighty-four thumbs up and seven thumbs down.
Laura Cooper. I strongly urge the school board to make a recommendation for distance learning as soon as possible following today's meeting, not on August 3rd. COVID-19 cases in the county are extremely unlikely to be one hundred per one hundred thousand residents by August 3rd. Making this decision sooner will give teachers, staff, parents, and students more time to prepare for distance learning.
That's gonna be seventy- That's going to be 77 thumbs up and six thumbs down.
Randy Barrows, I'm hoping that students will be able to return to school in the fall, and one approach that I haven't seen discussed locally is outdoor classrooms, although they are being implemented in other communities. Have you considered holding classes in outdoor open tents? Here is an informative article that discusses the pros and cons, followed by a very lengthy website. Also, for classes held indoors, I'm in favor of smaller class sizes to minimize the risks.
Yeah, so we're going to have 41 thumbs up and 26 thumbs down.
Kim Love, I think it is inevitable that the district will choose distance learning. Our teachers and communities' families need time to prepare for this decision. I urge you to make your final decision at the 7/17 meeting instead of having everyone wait until August 3rd.
70 thumbs up and 11 thumbs down.
Amber Hepner, I would like to ask the board to decide now if it will be adopting Plan C for the fall. It appears that there will be no real change in COVID numbers between now and August 3rd. However, families and teachers need to prepare for full-time distance learning. Other districts have already made the decision to go to full-time distance learning. I urge the board to choose that option today rather than wait until August 3rd. Thank you.
Yes, that's 87 thumbs up and nine thumbs down.
Jennifer Bauer, dear board and SLCUSD administrators, I'm a teacher in the district and want to thank you for all the work you've done on planning for the upcoming school year. It's appreciated. With the county's growing COVID numbers, it seems inevitable that we will need to choose distance learning on August 3rd. If you are leaning that way, I urge you to make that decision today and not wait until August. This gives teachers and families more time to prepare and plan. In regard to returning to school when the time comes, I urge you to consider a B2 plan for elementary school. My class this year has a projected number of 26 students. I don't feel it's safe to have that many students in the classroom at one time, even if their desks are six feet apart. Things that sound simple like washing your hands are difficult to manage safely with 26 students. Please imagine 26 seven-year-olds, many who have trouble standing still and keeping their hands to themselves as they wait in line for 20 minutes or more while everyone has a turn. Under the B2 plan, it would be 13 students or less in a classroom at one time, a number that is significantly easier to manage as we ensure our students' safety. Last, please consider planning for affordable childcare for teachers and families. Other districts I know are allowing students in need of care to stay on campus during a split schedule to do enrichment activities, intervention, and online learning. Thank you again for the work you are doing.
93 thumbs up, actually 95 thumbs up and eight thumbs down.
Jason Mayer, our daughter attends C.O.S. Smith Elementary and will begin sixth grade this year. I ask that you please vote to begin the 2021 school year off-site, given the current state of affairs. This would give parents, teachers, and staff time to prepare for what is looking to be inevitable, giving everyone a solid decision to move forward from and give everyone a small break from all the uncertainty. Thank you.
86 thumbs up and nine thumbs down.
Devin Koon Choi, dear school board members, thank you all for the hard work and thoughtful considerations you have put into these district plans. On Tuesday, the board of our neighboring Slow County School District, LUCMR, approved a plan to start the school year with distance learning. I would like to urge the SLCUSD board to similarly commit today to moving forward with Plan C rather than waiting until August 3rd to decide. We have been failing the necessary metric of fewer than 100 cases per 100,000 residents since the period beginning June 19. Even if the numbers do recede by August 3, it will likely be due to the governor shutting down numerous industries earlier this week, which suggests sending 8,000 students, teachers, and staff back into the workforce at such a critical point would be an unsafe decision. Therefore, the safest and likeliest decision will be to begin the year under Plan C. Committing to Plan C today achieves three important goals. One, it allows the district to immediately start focusing their reopening plans on Plan C rather than trying to work on four different plans at once. Once the school year is underway, the district would then have four more months to resume strengthening Plans B1 and 2 in preparation for January. The district has pointed out they need as much time as possible to plan for fall, understandably so, and a commitment today is the best way to achieve this. Currently, teachers do not know whether they will be teaching in-person, online-only, or a hybrid of the two, yet each of these formats requires different pedagogical strategies. Rather than ask teachers to wait longer, leaving them with little league time to plan, or asking them to spend their summer vacation doing triple the prep work for three different scenarios, committing today allows teachers to immediately begin prepping robust online lesson plans so they are fully prepared for August. Three, Plan C inevitably presents challenges for families, many of whom will need care for their children during the day. At present, we do not know whether our children will need care for full days or part-time in a hybrid plan, leaving parents stuck in limbo, unable to arrange childcare commitments. Waiting until August 3 to confirm a plan will leave families scrambling at the last minute. Committing to Plan C today allows families to immediately move forward finding solutions to any challenges this plan creates.
That's 98 thumbs up and 12 thumbs down.
Dawn Segman, dear members of the board, our children's health must come first. In June, before things opened, we were surveyed, and I had answered that I was considering sending my child to school in the fall. Since then, there is now a statewide mask mandate, but all plans include making mask-wearing voluntary because of difficulty with enforcement. That is unacceptable to me, as my child would be wearing a mask but would not be protected from the multitude of children who choose not to wear a mask. Her mask-wearing protects others, not her. If it isn't safe to hold a public in-person meeting about having schools resume public in-person learning, how can you conclude that it is safe for our children to go back to school for in-person instruction? It simply is not safe. Please follow the lead of other school districts in California, including Los Angeles, San Diego, and LUCMR, and postpone reopening the school campuses until our county is no longer on the watch list and is entering Stage 4 of the reopening plan. Any other efforts at this time seem to be destined for failure due to the increasing cases and lack of a state or national plan to arrest the spread of the virus beyond shutting down bars and restaurants for indoor visits. Thank you for your consideration.
97 thumbs up, 10 thumbs down.
Julia Harrigan, I am a resource teacher, and I am currently teaching ESY with five students in person and two online. There are also an additional four paraeducators. The weight of the responsibility of social distancing, mask-wearing, and keeping students and staff healthy is far too great to bear as a teacher in addition to my regular responsibilities. I am not qualified to police mask-wearing, distancing, sanitizing, temperature-taking, et cetera. I believe distance learning is the only option for the fall after experiencing this summer in person. In addition, we need time to mainstream our school's online format and get proper training, and we need that time now. Waiting until August 3 is too late to start planning.
95 thumbs up and 10 thumbs down.
Natasha Rahabharley, as a pediatrician, I am devastated for our children. Our county had five months to prepare for this, and we failed. The COVID numbers are too high. We don't have rapid tests available. We can't do routine testing to screen for asymptomatic cases. Contact tracing is almost non-existent in hardhead areas across the county, and our schools don't have the funding needed to do this safely. Our families will suffer greatly with online schooling, but sadly, it is the only viable option. We must choose Option C. Thank you for your consideration.
91 thumbs up, eight thumbs down.
Zach Regal, I am writing this email to urge the San Luis Coastal Unified School District to enter the 2020-2021 academic school year under Plan C. Six months since the first case of COVID-19 in the state of California, and we are in worse shape today in the state and our county than when schools were closed last March. Cases are on the rise in our county and our state. In my work as a critical care physician, I see daily that we are falling behind in testing capabilities, and contact tracing is very poor. Unfortunately, our society has failed our children, and my heart is broken for them. At this point, it is our responsibility to mitigate the harm, to protect not only our children, but also their caregivers and support networks. This absolutely includes the teachers and staff at our schools. That process starts with control of viral spread. Plan C is by no means optimal. None of this is optimal. The COVID-19 experience in the United States to date has been an unmitigated disaster. I urge the school board to be part of the solution.
105 thumbs up and 10 thumbs down.
Melissa Arona, I am asking the board to please choose Option C for full-distance learning in this meeting today. This will allow our teachers enough time to plan and be prepared for the beginning of the school year so they can provide the education that our children deserve. We are only postponing the inevitable, and we need to give teachers and families enough time to plan and prepare for the fall semester. It is time to make a responsible decision to protect our students and staff. COVID numbers are only increasing, and we need to put our community's health and safety first. Thank you.
Yeah, that's 104 thumbs up and eight thumbs down.
Dr. Jason and Katie Green, thank you for all the time, energy, effort, and I'm sure sleepless nights that have gone into these thoughtful reopening plans. We really appreciate it. We know you are incredibly busy with this difficult decision, so we will keep our comments short and sweet. We fully support opening the schools for in-person classes five days a week. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Down and 40 thumbs up.
How many down?
Let me see here, I apologize. 72 thumbs down and 38 thumbs up.
Thank you. Emily De Lamont, I respectfully ask that you please do not close the schools next month. Homeschooling in the spring broke my children's spirits. Both of my children, ages seven and 10, cried every day. By June, they had both shut down intellectually and socially and refused to participate. As a working, single mom, it turned my life into complete chaos, making it difficult to care for them financially and emotionally. Closed schools also strip away at women's rights because remote learning responsibilities fall upon women and harms them professionally. This decision will force working mothers back into the home. I was personally overlooked for work projects because I was too busy with homeschooling. I beg you not to take feminism back 50 years. We are blessed in our area with wonderful weather and large, open spaces which can provide safe environments for learning. Please do not break our children's souls all over again by forcing them back home. Thank you.
Yeah, that's going to be 72 thumbs down and 33 thumbs up.
Jason Browning, my name is Jason Browning, and I'm a kindergarten teacher at Pacheco Elementary. We are all in agreement about the educational, emotional, and economic detriments to having our students not physically in schools. I have seen this firsthand in my students and their families during the lockdown which started in March. However, I ask that you consider the following. One, we closed schools in March when, from a community health standpoint, our numbers were much lower. We are now considering opening schools when our numbers are dramatically increasing, breaking records daily, and putting us on the state's county watch list. Two, we are holding this board meeting virtually for our safety but are considering opening schools for in-person instruction. Three, we always are keeping the needs of the students in mind from a health, education, and emotional standpoint, and that is important. But we also need to remember that the employees' health and their emotional well-being be considered as well. These are just a few things to consider while weighing your decision. Thank you for your time.
93 thumbs up and nine thumbs down.
Kristin Nussbaum, as a SLCUSD teacher of 14 years and as a mother of three elementary schoolchildren in our district, I write to ask that the school board adopt Plan C for 2021 as soon as possible. Doing so will not only ensure the safest environment for my children, students, and myself, but will also show that our district is, in fact, following science with regard to COVID-19. If our goal as a district is to be safe and conscientious, then distance/digital is the only way forward. This teacher, her family, and her students, thank you for your time.
That's 92 thumbs up and 13 thumbs down.
Deborah Behringer, having watched community spread and the uncertainty in testing capacity as well as all of the study sessions, I would support starting the district entirely online. The metrics on August 4 may or may not provide sufficient information to guide the decision. Additionally, the requirement to choose the current distance learning option prior to knowing what the other option is should be changed. A robust online program of the classes offered in person, to the extent possible, should continue to be a focus of development with reassessment of moving toward opening schools when conditions improve. Given the current community spread and the community climate, it seems reasonable to deduce that in-person school will contribute to increased transmissions, even if the metrics fall between now and August 4, which may be reflective of the new restrictions. Hopefully, our industry and community employers will work with parents, families, and students to ensure flexibility in work schedules to help support our youth and our teachers. The safety of teachers, paraprofessionals, and all of the staff who work hard to support our schools is important, as are all our students. While I agree that having children stay home is a poor choice, the alternative appears worse and will continue the need for distance learning into the future. Better to reopen when people are not getting sick than to reopen when people get sick and then shut. Thank you for all your hard work in this impossible situation.
92 thumbs up and 13 thumbs down.
Julia McCadden, I would just like to let the board know about a short survey that was asked in a Facebook group. SLCUSD families for safe and equitable learning, consisting of 461 SLCUSD parents. In the group, it was asked if the Slow County COVID-19 infection rates are at or below 100 positive cases per 100,000 residents by August 3, 2020, and the district's proposed safety measures are all in place, would you be comfortable sending your child to school on August 24, 2020? As of this writing, the results were as follows. 70% of respondents replied, "No, not comfortable," with 76 votes. 30% of respondents replied, "Yes, comfortable," with 32 votes. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, that is 59 thumbs up, 13 thumbs down.
Joan Myers, as the mother of an extroverted, rising middle-schooler, a Cal Poly professor who best loves face-to-face discussion, and a person with autoimmune disease and chronic lung issues, I am deeply conflicted about how to balance physical and mental health with educational aspirations. But given what we know now about the virus's airborne spread and that its highest infectiousness is two days before any symptoms appear, and given the obvious failure to contain it nationally thus far, it seems impossible to seriously consider on-campus learning now. Please commit the SLCUSD to district learning Plan C until the new year. And please allow parents to reconsider their children's enrollment as research discovers more about the virus and its behavior, and as the SLCUSD plans change. Until we have widely available treatments and/or the widespread distribution of a lasting vaccine, please commit the district to safe, sane, and equitable teaching.
100 thumbs up, 11 thumbs down.
Vicky Sarhanus, thank you for all of the planning and considerations taken today. I recognize it's a very challenging time and an enormous decision for the school district. I would like to request that, given the increasing numbers and threat of the COVID-19 virus, schools pursue Plan C, distance learning, until a vaccine is available. The cases are exponentially increasing and are an indication of what will continue to happen when larger groups of people are brought together. Students aged 13 and over have been identified just as susceptible to the virus as adults, so I would recommend we do all that we can to limit exposure. I'd also like to request that a decision be made on July 16 and not postponed until August 3 to allow parents to properly plan against the new school year since Plan A is not an option. Many households will need more than three weeks to make adjustments. Thank you for your time and consideration.
92 thumbs up, 10 thumbs down.
Kayla Camper, thank you for your time. I am a community member, teacher, and mother. I am asking you to consider making your decision today during the meeting. Determining how we engage in the fall will give teachers more time to prepare and plan, and families more time to adjust. Waiting is not going to change our inevitable outcome, but it will impact how we can all plan and prepare. Secondly, I am very concerned Secondly, I am very concerned about childcare. This was a huge challenge in the spring while I was trying to teach from home with a newborn and my three-year-old. Without care, I will not be able to be an effective teacher to my students. Not all teachers have childcare access, and I'm concerned preschool may also close as they did in the spring. Please provide childcare for our teachers and families who need it. Lastly, I urge you to consider smaller class sizes when we do return for first through sixth grades as TKK have been allotted for. Returning to B1 is overwhelming for myself and many other elementary teachers. I'm concerned I would spend most of my time managing students for safety rather than teaching. Time, space, and resources alone will not be adequate to support teaching full days with whole classes at the elementary level. Thank you for your time and support.
Hundred and two thumbs up and eight thumbs down.
Excuse me. Sean and Sarah Flickinger, good afternoon. Thank you for all the hard work you are doing on behalf of our students. As a parent of an enrolled student, we are struggling with our decisions between distance learning and keeping our daughter in her current school, one of the district's charter schools. And under the currently proposed plans, we are starting to feel like doing a private homeschool option may be our best bet, which is a difficult thought as we think very highly of both our school and district and would prefer to keep our daughter enrolled with SLCUSD. As a family with a high-risk member, we would be comfortable with starting the year with Plan C, but encourage you to make that decision as early as possible to provide adequate time for teachers to prepare and develop their plans to make distance learning the best experience possible, and parents to plan to support those efforts on the home side. I support choosing Plan C at the 7/16 meeting. Dates coinciding with trimesters could be used for reevaluation of that decision throughout the year so that if something significant changes, i.e. a successful vaccine or availability of better treatments, students might have the chance to return to an in-school setting at some point during the year. Teachers would also have a clear segment of instruction to prepare for in regular intervals rather than having an undue burden of needing to go between B1 and C unpredictably throughout the year. We do not feel comfortable with the parameters outlined in the recommendation for August 3 as there is too small a margin to expect consistency, much less a sense of safety and security throughout the school year. Recognizing that virtual learning for the whole year is our only other option but that it would require our daughter's learning environment to change significantly, we are seriously considering private homeschooling. She is a teach where the curriculum is covered in a different manner. She was miserably bored at her prior elementary, which caused significant issues, and going back to that situation is far less than ideal, particularly in a home learning environment. We encourage the district to make all curriculum style of teaching used in the district to be available through DL, BL to provide an equitable set of options for every family regardless of health status. Grouping students with teachers and peers from their current school to the greatest extent possible within the BL would also support our students' and teachers' wellbeing and reduce adverse impacts on reentry in future school years. Even if just a portion of the day, like a middle school homeroom for elementary were conducted amongst her schoolmates and teachers, it would make a big difference in our decision. And that is all I'm able to read of that one because of the maximum word count.
That's eighty-eight thumbs up and nine thumbs down.
Catherine Campbell, we would like to reinforce Stan Yoshinobu's correspondence. The only ethical and safe choice, given current circumstances, is Plan C. History will judge us, our own hearts and minds and families will judge us. It is our collective duty to take care of our community together as best we can. We too have a small child, an incoming kindergartner who has been eagerly awaiting real school, and a teenager who desperately wants to be with her friends and to learn in classrooms again. We understand all too well why people are eager for normalcy to resume, but these are not normal times. These are extraordinary times that call for extraordinary measures. We must protect our most vulnerable, including teachers and staff. Plan C is the best option. Thank you for your time.
Ninety-eight thumbs up and eleven thumbs down.
Spring M. Andalotti, please plan to start the 2021 school year with Plan C, distance learning, at all schools for the safety of our students, teachers, and families. Planning now would give the teachers and families the time they need to make this work. Last-minute changes are hard on everyone.
Yeah, that's gonna be eighty-five thumbs up and eight thumbs down.
Dakota Molten, as both a staff member and parent in our district, I would like to encourage the board to come to a decision today to allow time for our staff and district families to plan with regard to the selected reopening plan. I understand and share in holding out hope for a return to school via Plans B1 and 2, but August 3 provides limited time for employees and families to plan the necessary scheduling and accommodations that may likely be needed regardless of which plan is chosen. Thank you for your hard work and for considering the health of our staff, families, and students.
Yeah, it's gonna be ninety-five thumbs up, seven thumbs down.
Connie Reynoso, there is nothing that I would like more than to return to the classroom and teach. I've been blessed to do this job for the last nineteen years and would love to continue doing so for many more. It is surreal that we have to think very deeply of student safety as we plan on returning to school. If COVID cases go down, then I am ready to go back under Plan A with precautions in place. If COVID cases continue to rise, then we will be forced to go to Plan B or C. As it stands, Plan B for elementary school-aged children worries me. Having an AM and PM group means that I see all students daily and that classroom surfaces and materials get utilized by all kids daily. How will all classes and bathrooms be cleaned properly within the allotted time? I have yet to see a plan that addresses this problem. I understand that younger kids are less likely to have life-threatening symptoms with COVID, but they can be carriers of the virus. I feel that a different Plan B is safest for all. Having a group of students, Cohort A, come on Monday and Tuesday and Cohort B on Thursday and Friday means that Wednesday can be utilized for deep cleaning and sanitizing. This would make the classroom a safer place for all. If the issue of cleaning in between classes gets resolved, then we also need to be aware that the afternoon group has the worst block for language arts instruction. There is a reason why reading and writing always takes place in the morning and science and art in the afternoon. My first graders have better focus for this type of learning in the morning. I have experience in this field and can attest to that. The fact that most classrooms in Slow lack even a window AC just adds to the problem of focus on hot afternoons. I am also getting ready for Plan C because although it's not my preferred plan, it is one that will keep more families safe. If our county is closing in dining restaurant services, then it does not make sense to have class on campus. As educators, our role is to engage students in learning, and we must continue to do that, but we must do so in the safest environment possible.
Ninety-two thumbs up, ten thumbs down.
Megan White, Plan B1 for elementary schools does not define how many children would be in each cohort. The term "reasonable" is used followed by the caveat "in most cases." Can you please identify how many children would be in a cohort or define a range? This is essential for my family to make an informed decision for the upcoming year. Thank you.
Yeah, let me get to that right there, fifty-eight thumbs up and nine thumbs down.
Stacy Hurt, to me, it makes no sense to send our children back to school if all staff and teachers are not comfortable going back to school. I think it would be highly more beneficial to our children to decide on virtual learning now and give the teachers time to plan to make it the best experience possible. Thank you.
Yeah, it's eighty-five thumbs up and ten thumbs down.
Julie Ulecht, COVID conditions are rapidly evolving. If cases continue to increase, it may make sense for high schools to begin with distance learning and transition to something akin to Plan 2B once Slow County can reach some improvement targets. Any viable in-person high school reentry plan needs to involve reducing class sizes, maintaining six-foot minimum social distancing in classrooms, wearing masks in classrooms, and cleaning desks and other frequently touched surfaces in between classes. Please consider implementing a variety of measures to reduce class size, including dividing student body to attend on different days, reducing the five-period requirement for seniors nearing graduation requirements, encouraging early graduation, allowing all students an option to take a certain number of approved online community college classes or other approved online providers in lieu of in-person attendance at the high school, and welcoming new proposals to reduce total students on campus. My understanding is that the average time from exposure to symptoms is around four days. Given this information, clustering days of in-person attendance, e.g. Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday, would be safer than AM/PM daily attendance or alternating days. Consolidating days creates a five-day buffer period, so it is more likely that students who become exposed to the virus would begin to exhibit symptoms before returning to school to expose others. Further, the AM/PM split would involve greater numbers of students on campus every day, creating a need for intense cleaning daily between the AM/PM groups. Due to the increased risk of being in cars, small spaces together, many will likely choose not to carpool or take public transportation, so we can expect to see a greater volume of cars traveling to or from school than we've experienced in the past. This will compound traffic issues around the campus and in surrounding neighborhoods, conditions that would be exacerbated by AM/PM daily attendance. The success of any in-person plan will rely on enforcing the rules. What type of consequences would there be for students who refuse to wear a mask or follow other directions related to COVID safety? The protocol for ill students is another critical aspect of any approach that should be detailed prior to expecting families to select a plan. Thank you for your commitment to identifying the most strategic and sustainable reentry plans for our children and our community.
Seventy-three thumbs up and nine thumbs down.
Robin Sims, as a parent of a first grader at Baywood Elementary, I do not feel safe sending my child to school for in-person learning. Please choose Plan C.
Sixty thumbs up, twelve thumbs down.
Jessica Page, first off, thank you for all your hard work. As you consider what the best reopening plan is for our district, I ask you to please take careful consideration of our children with IEPs in place or learning disabilities. My son has an IEP in place. This last spring was terribly difficult for him, to say the least. Even with the complete support from his teacher and the staff, he struggled. Online learning is not ideal for him. Zoom meetings with his class was overwhelming and stressful. I ask that if our children are not going to return to school in person, then what can be done to make sure my son and others receive the additional one-on-one support that they so desperately need? The special accommodations that our children need are not met. I fear that the long-lasting effects will be irreversible. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, sixty-seven thumbs up and ten thumbs down.
Sue and Ken Carlskent, I'm writing to share with you my support of a full district distance learning for the fall semester. Our health statistics are significantly higher in positive COVID cases than they were in March. All the plans provided so far to bring kids back to school do not provide options for cleaner environment, safe distancing, and minimizing exposure to other people, which puts students, staff, teachers, and families at home in a situation that involves unnecessary exposure to a dangerous virus. Further, each plan seems to be pretty site-specific and does not take into account the reality of families of children at multiple schools, further increasing exposure back into the household. We understand that some families may need extra attention from the school, and for that, we hope that there can be some accommodations made. Short-term inconvenience for most, though, is significantly better than long-term impacts of a virus that could impact our communities, families, adults, and children for years into the future. It is our ardent hope that from this moment forward, teachers be provided with adequate time to prepare for full district stay-at-home learning lesson plans. Simply providing a link to an online textbook or pointing a student to Khan Academy isn't teaching, it's proctoring. Teachers are being paid to share their expertise in a subject matter with students, and we want them to have time to prepare for that. We respectfully request that the board make the decision to learn at home now through winter break rather than waiting till August 3 to decide. This will provide needed days for staff, teachers, and parents to plan. Further, when it is finally safe to have children and adults together, please consider starting small and working into a larger environment. The number of students back at school should be necessitated by physical space and physical distancing guidelines. If crowded bars had to be shut down for health and safety reasons, it makes no sense to discuss returning classrooms to normal crowded levels. This should be our time to come together virtually as a community and hopefully help end this pandemic with some careful distancing.
Yes, that's a hundred and five thumbs up and ten thumbs down.
Thank you. Diana Moffett, I would like to request the board votes to go virtual learning in the fall at this meeting so preparations can begin to be made. I would also like to share that we have had a horrible experience with Apex this summer in algebra. My daughter is entering ninth grade. The coursework is dense, there is confusion, no teacher to turn to, and zero interaction with other students in the class. I give it an F and I hope it's not used for our students' virtual learning platform.
One second, my computer's having some issues. Eighty thumbs up, eleven thumbs down.
Jennifer Hagedue, due to increase in COVID-19 cases in Slow County and no official adherence to public safety by all residents in relation to the wearing of masks and social distancing, it is imperative that the district moves to online learning until the spread of this virus is no longer a threat to our children, teachers, and staff. I am saddened that we have to continue distance learning for our children, but it is the only viable option right now to increase public safety.
Yep, it is eighty-six thumbs up and twelve thumbs down.
Thank you. And then I am going to... Just one moment. I'm looking at the ones that have come in. Bear with me, I have to shift to my computer now to read. Okay, just one moment, please.
Let me unmute you. Alan, go ahead, it should display on the screen right next to you to unmute. There you go, you're unmuted.
Thank you, yeah, thank you for your patience, I'm just having to get to a document here. All right. So I will now read ones that have come in while the meeting, either later this morning or as the meeting's been underway. And then we'll go to board public comment from people who may wish to say anything, but again, please keep in mind that if you're hearing things that enforce your own opinion, we have our board discussion to have as well. So rather than repeat, just let us know through the thumbs up and thumbs down. Laura Fields, as a parent with a child who is supposed to start at Teach School next month, I feel I am being backed into a corner with regards to my child's safety. Choosing to have her enroll in the online course means giving up her spot at Teach, which was by lottery this year. It is highly likely that there would be no spots available in subsequent years, which means I am being forced to choose not just for this school year, but likely giving up that spot permanently. She is a gifted child, and there is no other gate support in this district other than Teach School. I would ask that the board consider a system that does not force this choice.
Fifty-one thumbs up and nine thumbs down.
Thank you. Colby Phelan, I am a fifth-grade teacher at Hawthorne Elementary School. I admire the idea of waiting until August to make a decision in hopes that we can return to our campus. However, I ask the board to consider making a decision now so that teachers, parents, and families can begin planning their logistics for the upcoming year. Three weeks is simply not enough time to properly get all systems in place. Thank you.
Yeah, that's gonna be seventy-two thumbs up and nine thumbs down.
Adrian Harris, thank you for the opportunity to... Adrian Harris, thank you for the opportunity to comment on the reopening plan. Our family greatly appreciates the district staff's attention to creating a safe environment for learning. We have all faced difficult times since the COVID-19 outbreak, though the challenges facing different families and staff varies. I appreciate that the district is considering different situations for different age groups and not a one-size-fits-all situation. For those children just entering kindergarten, it would be beneficial if safety measures allow for them to have some face-to-face interactions with their teachers and cohort, so they feel connected to their new school. Even if that interaction is short or infrequent, I believe it will help them to adjust to their new situation. I hope that the larger magnet schools like Pacheco Elementary will be able to find the ability to have some face-to-face interactions, perhaps outdoors. If the school year will start with full distance learning or at any time in the next school year if the district must shift to this model, I ask that the district put in place realistic academic requirements and time requirements for this method of instruction. Given the knowledge that many families are juggling caring for multiple children and working with limited to no assistance with childcare, it is better for the children and for families to have attainable expectations. Thank you for all that you do for the community.
Sixty-one thumbs up, ten thumbs down.
Wendy Sylvester, Placer Union High School District in Placer County voted to go back full schedule with desk partitions and typical COVID safety protocols. They are a full day with Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, Friday schedule with Wednesday off for cleaning. Capo Unified School District in Orange County, with 50,000-plus students and administration is doing a 50% schedule for those who opt in. Dr. Bornstein and local E.R. physicians who have children in our school see no reason not to return to campus with proper safety protocol. Studies show very little if any transmission rate among this school-age group. Mental health studies of our children show an average of 50% of teens and children suffering from mental illness and depression during this pandemic. Initially, the district stated its desire for school to resume as normally as possible. Many families want that, as well, as well as some teachers. If you have no local barriers to returning, and you have families willing and wanting to return, why are we not offering that as an option?
Thirty-four thumbs up and eighty-four thumbs down.
Nicolette, I find it incredible that no one on the school board has done their proper research to see that the only reason there is a spike in positive COVID-19 cases is because the public health department is testing more people. Yes, there are much more positive cases due to widespread testing, but has anyone paid attention to the death toll? It's gone down measurably. The risks of keeping our children out of school far outweighs the risk of having them in school. The social development of my five-year-old hangs in the balance here. She is getting shafted educationally, socially, and emotionally, because a smaller group of people would rather think of only themselves and not the futures of our children. Give the teachers the option to go back or not, and then hire younger teachers who aren't allowing a virus less deadly than the annual flu to dictate their lives. You're going to need some money freed up to make all those necessary modifications in the schools. Why not get rid of the teachers, faculty, and board members making this more difficult than it already is?
Twenty-seven thumbs up, a hundred and twenty-eight thumbs down.
Just one moment. BJ, is it possible to offer pods of students move towards more outdoor learning classrooms on days when weather is permitting, possibly utilizing public parks or other locations to help various class sizes and groups to rotate for students while outdoors? I would support an option that is partial person and partial distance learning, but we need something for students and teachers to allow distance when possible, vitamin D, fresh air, and socialization. Why not have various school times for various ages, or letters of the alphabet, or some other method of reducing the sizes of the student pods or classrooms? Parents who cannot work cannot also pay for private care. Parents who can work might have to make poor decisions to leave their children at home alone when they may not be of proper age to stay at home. Parents also need to work to pay for rent, et cetera. Single parents are in an extremely tough spot. Parents with children who have special needs parents with children who have special needs are in a very tough spot. Parents who rely on two incomes are in a very tough spot. Everyone is in a tough spot, but many are in much more of a tough spot than others. I do not think indoor in-person learning is the way to go. It is far too risky. I also do not think mandating the amount of time and effort to be spent on distance learning with such rigorous demands is not appropriate for students, teachers, or parents. It is not effective for this demographic of students, as they do not learn in that manner. They are tactile and developing social and emotional abilities at their young age. We cannot do virtual distance learning as proposed, and yet we cannot return to in-person, in-class learning. We need something flexible, meeting the needs of students and teachers in a myriad of ways. Creative thinking, creative out-of-the-box approaches can get us all through this while keeping our kids up to speed academically and emotionally. There must be a safe way, maybe with parent volunteers combined with substitutes and credentialed teachers, to have some in-person learning in small pods in an outdoor space when able. I'm not saying I know the answer, but I do know we cannot survive full distance learning. Due to loss of income, loss of education for our children, loss of life, we will have a lot of homeless displaced, undernourished, and undereducated children if we move to full distance learning. There has to be a middle ground, small pods of support, and other options. Thank you for doing your best. Thank you for trying to figure this out for the parents, students, community, and all involved.
That's forty-three thumbs up, forty-one thumbs down.
Wolfgang Kamel, the Baptist School challenge has been approached too pragmatic, too politically correct, and the school district has greatly missed the mark. Too many choices, no decisions, and with that very poor preparation and planning. Online school is no longer an option. It is the only choice for consistency for parents at this late hour. They may not like it, but we know what to deal with. We are subscribing our kids to online school. It will be very challenging, it will be much new, it will be much undesired due to our children missing their friends and very much missing their teachers. We hope that our teachers will receive proper training and time immediately to prepare for and as much as possible in-person social online school experience. Online school through tooling such as Zoom and an interactive experience with present teachers for our kids would be the most desired option. Again, our kids would miss their teachers and their friends the most. Our children have gotten accustomed to manage the additional academic learning challenge. Due to lack of decision-making and providing solid plans by the school district by this time when parents need to make decisions, distance learning and online school is the only known option. Thank you.
Sixty-eight thumbs up, twenty-two thumbs down.
Again, people who have written ones before, I'm not reading a second a second comment from you. Amy, schools should resume in person. The students are at a low risk and the death rate percentage is 0.04. Take precautions, but have them go to school. You have given the options for others to opt out for in-person school. If you are comfortable sending your kids to school, you should have that option. Lexi Bell, many comments are urging the board to decide today to adopt Plan C based on conditions we are seeing right now. I would like to see the board maintain a reasoned approach and stick with the proposal to make a choice on August 3rd based on current data. The restrictions we are experiencing now may very well reduce active case numbers in our county by August 3. It is a false choice that online learning is a more certain choice than in-person. There are significant learning and health consequences for both scenarios, and I think it is best to maximize the data available before making a choice.
Yeah, that is twenty-nine thumbs up, eighty-five thumbs down.
Sybil Haley, as it seems that distance learning will be the inevitable path for starting school in the fall, I would like to recommend that two options are made available for SLCUSD families. The current Plan C and an alternate plan similar to a homeschool curriculum where students and families are able to structure the educational process on their own flexible schedule. I know many families are planning to abandon our local school districts for other homeschool options if we are forced to stay at home and learn on a rigid schedule that does not accommodate parents who will still be working without daytime flexibility. Please spend the next few weeks considering and constructing these options so that when we do return to in-class learning, our students will be returning to campuses with their friends instead of losing many district students to alternate educational opportunities. Thank you.
Forty-seven thumbs up, twenty-nine thumbs down.
Lori Ledinger, I am the parent of three teens at Morro Bay High School. Many of the comments have referred to waiting to bring children back to school in person until COVID-19... Oops, sorry. Until COVID-19 levels drop or until there is a vaccine. The virus has been around since early 2000. None of the experts out there see a vaccine in the near future, if ever. People don't live in a bubble. Our kids are seeing other kids. They are working, we are working, we go to grocery stores, et cetera. The teachers are doing the same thing. There is no way to guarantee that you or your child won't get COVID just living life. There have only been fourteen confirmed cases in Morro Bay. People have mentioned making the right decision for the community. If the county were concerned about protecting the community, the economy, or our children so they could go back to school, they would have enforced mask use mask use and keeping tourists out. Why should our children's education be the casualty when there are too many factors to control for anyhow? If you decide for the fall to be online, can I please request that provisions be made to let students, athletes, condition, and that other students have the option to receive P.E. and participate in other activities like band and other electives? Also, it will be extremely important for parents to be kept informed about our student homework and assignments. Also, is there a reason why all schools, no matter elementary, high, middle, or high school have to go with the same plan? It would be fairly easy for high school students to do a Plan B scenario. Thanks, I know this is a difficult decision.
Thirty-five thumbs up, eighty-two thumbs down.
Lori Harris, thank you for hearing my comment. Many people are expressing concerns about bringing kids together, and I agree. What could be done by the schools to offer social opportunities to augment the distance learning option on a limited and safe manner? Schools are good at providing these important connections because of large outdoor recreation spaces and equipment. Even limited connections with peers could be beneficial to emotional well-being.
That's thirty-six thumbs up, twenty-five thumbs down.
Xavier Clements, hello, members of the board. I am Xavier Clements, and I am going into high school next year. Having heard the opinions of those before me today, I urge you to vote Option B. There are alternatives which can be considered under Option B, such as teaching outside and others, which can help protect student and staff health. While it is safer to do distance learning, the trade-off ends up being students' mental and social health. I urge you to listen to opinions of not just parents, which is only one demographic, but to get opinions of children who may have different views. There would have to be very strict rules, but as such, the children would be more likely to learn and to stay in school. Thank you for your time.
Thirty-eight thumbs up, fifty-two thumbs down.
Mark Townsend, thank you all for your hard work and dedication to public service. As a middle school teacher in the district, I would like to advocate for Option C through winter break. Being in front of students is a true joy for most teachers, even during a flu season. But this is not a flu nor a season. Teachers and school staff are not just school supplies to be discounted. We are your employees and deserve to feel safe. With those advocating to send students back to school, be willing to do what they are asking of us. Even during non-COVID times, our school does not provide us with hand sanitizer. And each spring, we receive emails from office staff letting us know we're out of tissues and that we should buy our own if we need them. If the district cannot protect us in normal times, how are we to expect protection during pandemic times? I trust you will make the right decision for staff and their families, the ones who will be dealing with hundreds of students per day. Thank you again for your hard work.
A hundred and seven thumbs up, fifteen thumbs down.
Simon and Rachel Kavesti, dear Dr. Prater, members of this board and SLCUSD staff, thank you very much for your thoughtful approach to educating and comforting our students and staff during this unprecedented time. We appreciate your efforts as you strive to achieve a balance that maximizes the safety and well-being of the entire community. We have reviewed the SLCUSD reentry core document as well as the SLCUSD COVID-19 Working Guidelines Version 1.5, and note that these documents do not include any information or guidelines for virtual learning. Although leadership group protocols are in place for special education, band, athletics, shop, childcare counseling, food service, nursing, transportation, and other needs, no leadership group protocol seems to have been developed for this absolutely critical component of the 2021 school year. District families, students, and staff alike, who like ours include vulnerable family members like me with progressing cancer, need to understand the game plan for distance learning. Given our county's recent increase in case counts, hospitalizations, and deaths, it is imperative that a robust distance virtual learning plan be operational in August. From a layman's perspective, it seems that the following broad steps are required immediately. Initiate a virtual learning group protocol. Identify district teachers who need want to work remotely. Match these educators with plug-and-play programs with flexibility for lesson plans. Enroll students in the virtual learning program. While we remain hopeful that most SLCUSD students and staff can return to school safely later this summer, a program must be in place for those who cannot. Understanding the availability of accredited online learning programs already offered by public and private institutions, e.g. the UC Scout Program, free to California high schools, we look forward to reviewing a comprehensive plan for SLCUSD verbal learning, virtual learning. Okay, we're going to go to live public comment now, and after we hear from the public live, we're going to take a break.
Yep, and the last one had fifty-one thumbs up, sixteen thumbs down. And just once again, if you'd like to speak, click on Participants, and then the hand raise icon, as you can see, some people have already raised their hands. And the first person I saw, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was gonna say, then you'll need to wait to be recognized, please. And again, if someone else makes everything you were going to say, indicate by the thumbs up and thumbs down, and don't feel the need to repeat.
Yeah, and the first person I saw was Emily Capollano. I apologize if I butchered the name.
That's, no, you said it completely correctly. Emily.
Emily, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, school board trustees and all 552 participants. I'm Emily Capollano, and I'm a teacher in San Luis Coastal Unified School District, and I'm also the president of our teacher association, which is all certificated members. First, I want to thank you, everyone who's made comments supporting all of our staff and community of San Luis Unified School District. It just feels very supported, and I really appreciate those comments, and I know fellow members do, too. As the numbers of COVID positive cases rose in our county, we as an association have been getting a lot more emails, calls, texts, and concerns from our members about the health and safety of our students, of their families, and of all staff that come onto campuses. We were urged to do a survey among our members, and so we decided to do a quick turnaround, one-question survey, after we knew about the metrics and the plans for safety that would be in place according to what was published on Monday. And so, out of our one-questions survey, we had 313 responses out of about 400 members, so quite a few respondents, which is really great to hear from them. And we've been hovering around 62% saying that we're not comfortable going back in person under those conditions with 100 to 100,000-case metric and the safety measures that are currently in the plan. So 62% of our members are saying they're not feeling comfortable. And I just would say, you know, just so you know that that's how people are feeling, and a lot of the people that you've spoken today, just please, I'm urging you to put our health and safety at the forefront of any concerns when making this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Fatima.
Hi. My name's Fatima Sala. I am...
My name's Fatima Sala. I am a history teacher at Morro Bay High School. And I just want to kind of say exactly what Emily said.
I have my P E in here.
Sorry about that. Let me mute people.
I really appreciate all the comments from the public that are concerned for, for the health and safety of students and teachers and staff. A couple of things that I didn't really hear that often in the comments were, just from a teacher perspective, how important consistency is for kids. And so I'm really concerned with the hybrid model and the potential for starting off as a hybrid and having that abrupt change over to distance learning the way that we had in the spring. I think a lot of people's concerns where it seemed not well-planned and it seemed chaotic at home had to do with the fact that our district implemented online learning very quickly compared to other districts. We only had two days to prepare lessons and to switch over to online learning. And so with more time and more planning, I think that that can be something that's developed and done well. Also, just the logistics, buses, heating, my classroom sizes. I know that in elementary, we're concerned with 30 kids. I see over 150 kids every day. And so that level of exposure is much higher in secondary than it is in elementary for teachers. And so if someone exposes me and my classroom to it, then that trucks out to 150 kids plus. And then from there to their family members in the community, even more in secondary. The other thing that I'm really concerned about is that basically, everyone is concerned about kids getting behind. We're all in this together. It's a pandemic. We've created this imaginary finish line for our kids. And in reality, we're all pushing through the best we can, and I hope that the board will just make a decision knowing that, that that finish line or where we expect kids to be by 12th grade, it's going to be different for this group of kids. We're living through a pandemic, and during a pandemic, history has shown us, you stay home. That's the way, the way to stay safe. And, and the board should really think about the health and safety of students and staff and the community. It's not our job to necessarily fix the economy and the issue of people being at work. That's all. I appreciate your guys' time.
Thank you.
Ninety-six thumbs up, nine thumbs down.
Next, I have Leila. Leila?
Thank you. Yeah, so I think that letting teachers and staff and students return to school during COVID-19 pandemic is not a good idea. It will increase the risk of our spreading COVID-19 and further harm our communities. And the points that I'm making and that I haven't heard a lot of other people talk about is that our black and brown families, our families of color are being hit hardest by the current pandemic. And so opening the schools back up while knowingly putting people at risk is unconscionable. LAUSD and San Diego districts are going virtual, and we should as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eighty, ninety-three thumbs up, twelve thumbs down.
Okay, next is Kim.
Hi, thank you for your time. I have a question, and I'm hoping that the board will address whether the, the style of the virtual learning program, the online learning, whether or not it will be synchronous or asynchronous? And is there, are there going to be set times? Because I think that's important for working parents to know, to be able to plan sooner rather than later. And I also don't know if you guys are aware, but Governor Newsom did just call a press conference tomorrow at noon regarding schools. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Fifty-six thumbs up, nine thumbs down.
Next is Kayanne.
Yes, hello. This is Kristin Nessbaum. I'm a teacher at San Luis Obispo High School. And one additional note that I wanted to make is, in the reopening documents, it states that all secondaries shall be placed on a six-period semester schedule. That does add an extra class onto the standard five periods that students attend school. In addition, it adds one extra class per teaching load, for teachers teaching, assuming, assumedly a five out of six semester, which further increases potential transmission among students and teachers and staff by having what, like Fatima was saying from Morro Bay, at San Luis Obispo High School, we teach, you know, classes of 35. And if I have four periods a day, granted, not all of them are at 35, but for math's sake, we could see upwards of 140 students in any given day or every day as it is. So adding additional students onto that in a semester schedule will not only increase the number of students that we see on a given day, but also increase the number of students that students are mingling around within their extra period. Doing so will also have adverse impact seen on elective programs potentially. So it is a little bit of a concern of pro-trimester teachers who do teach electives or who would like to retain our current schedule as voted by union members. Additionally, I am in favor of adopting, early adopting Plan C if possible by today, if not by August 3rd, in order to allow staff members to properly have enough time to plan. Because I think in March, on March 13th, when school closed so abruptly for us all, we may do with what we had, and we did the best we could ASAP by March 16 and beyond. And so the more time that, I'll speak for myself, the more time that I would have to prepare my lessons over the course of this summer, even in unpaid status, I would do that starting as early as this evening. I want to be planned for my students. I want to reassure my families that we will all be as safe as possible. And I think an early adoption of Plan C in order to do that safely would put a lot of people at ease, including myself, my family, my elder parents that I caretake for, my immunocompromised friends in the neighborhood. I think speaking from a community perspective, why rush if we don't have to? Why rush if we have the digital resources at our disposal to use and in order to support our students, their families, our families? I have children in the school district at the elementary level. I want so badly for them to go back to their school sites to engage in that social engagement that they have been doing for the early part of their education. But at this time, I just don't feel that that style of social engagement exists.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
Three minutes.
Thank you.
Thanks. And I would also like to indicate that if you made a written comment, please, that counts as your three minutes. So kind of have to have one or the other. You may, you're welcome to speak at, at a meeting, and you're welcome to send a written comment that we read aloud, but you get one or the other.
That was 104 thumbs up and nine thumbs down.
Thank you. And next is Barbara.
Barbara, you could go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. Barbara Dork. And first and foremost, I would like to thank you, and we appreciate all efforts of the district staff. This process has given us a greater understanding of all their talents. Our family's choice for returning to school for our 14-year-old is to begin with Plan C, distance learning, and if we must, Plan B, but with greater use of face coverings. Please make your decision for reopening tonight. The parents, students, teachers begin planning for the new year and the uncertainty. Don't wait for a matrix on August 3rd. Continue with multiple inputs, as the superintendent has, from the Governor's State, State Law, applicable federal state, and public health directives. We would like to see stronger language, which actually requires face coverings, six-foot distancing, and improvements to ventilation. We are very concerned that the reopening guidelines do not actually require or mandate the use of face coverings in the school, even though it states, quote, "enforcement of face coverings guidelines are more important for secondary schools as a whole," close quote. And Plan B2 only states, "On-campus learning will require the use of face coverings." Yes, district reopening plans do require the use of face coverings, and they allow also inconsistencies and exceptions for the face coverings. Basically, they're allowed to be removed in the classroom. And that's almost 90% of the day. That requirement, it should be required that face coverings be worn in the classroom. Of course, breaks outside, take them off. The classroom is where students spend most of their time. When you allow 90% of the day without a face covering, how can you say face coverings will be worn or our schools will be safe? It seems especially dangerous to allow the removal of face coverings inside small, stuffy classrooms where air can carry the virus. Doesn't Governor Newsom require face coverings indoors with or without face, six-foot distancing? Businesses all over California are requiring face coverings indoors. Don't our children and our teachers deserve similar COVID-19 safe environments? Thank you for considering our concerns. Tonight, please err on the side of caution and choose to reopen this semester with distance learning. Don't wait until August 3rd and depend on a single metric. Thank you very much. And our grandson talked to a friend today and his, said, his mother says it's really silly to go back to school and unsafe. Just wanted to add his comment. Thank you very much for all your time, effort, and it's appreciated.
Thank you.
Hundred and four thumbs up and eight thumbs down.
Angelina?
Hi, my name's Angelina. I have two children at Delmar Elementary School. And while this is, this is my hometown, we recently, just after the beginning of the school year, moved back from Pasadena in Southern California. And one request that I have is, I'm just kind of assuming that we're going to be doing virtual learning, just because that kind of seems the way that everybody is heading at this point. And I would like to try to impress upon you to improve the different options, the different virtual learning platforms that the children have, because the investment in that technology now will really help the children throughout however long they're going to be learning from home. My son, he was still somehow able to access all of the platforms that they had through Pasadena's, Pasadena Unified School District, and he enjoyed using those platforms much more than the ones that were available through our school district. And I would, you know, I would say, I don't want to say his name, but I would say, you're supposed to be doing the ones that are recorded through your school, not the ones that are through your old school, which don't count for time anymore. But I would catch him doing those for fun on the side. So I don't know if you guys can try and look kind of at a comprehensive approach for our school district, but there are other ones out there that are fun, that are interesting, that seem more like games than just tick off these boxes. Sometimes you can have different ones that are for children that are learning at different levels or the speed of getting through the different platforms. There's so many different things. But I was a student when I was taking night classes at Questa. My mother is a teacher at Allen Hancock. When all this happened, we were parents, we're students, you know, we completely went online for all of these different classes that had not been taught online before. And I impress upon you to try and make a decision today so that our teachers can try and prepare something meaningful for the fall. I know that, that they've had all summer, but really, until we make that concrete decision, it is difficult to get the material prepared for. And, you know, some people, they're still learning how to use the internet. And, and if we can also provide maybe some pamphlets for parents to use in order to do things, because yes, we have, you know, we have all different ages, all different technology ranges. But these, you know, we have younger parents that maybe are more technology prone. We have older parents that maybe have dial-in internet and have never even, you know, used email before. So try and make some, some information that we can hand out, that we can mail, so that everybody can try and have access, and also so that teachers can prepare for virtual learning, because I'm just assuming at this point, that's the direction we're going. Also, one last point. Our family's been here for a pretty long time, and in the late 90s, early 2000s, there was several schools that closed in San Luis Coastal Unified School District, two that I can remember, because I can't remember all of them, were Morro Elementary and Sunnyside Elementary. I was wondering if those are still, you know, in our school district, if we own the land, if we don't. But, you know, maybe those schools are an option to try to, when we do go back, you know, long range, when we do go back into the classes, maybe we can reduce classroom sizes instead of putting portables on our school systems. Maybe we can use facilities in our communities during the week, maybe when other people are not there to try to.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Phil?
You should have a pop-up, Phil, that allows you to unmute. There you go, Phil.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Phil Angelo. I'm a parent of a 12th grader or an ongoing, upcoming 12th grader at San Luis High. I'm just a little concerned about the abrupt transition from a trimester schedule to a semester schedule. My daughter started slow high late and was told she needed to make sure she took all her classes as a senior with no breaks. If I had known this in June, I would have forced her into summer school. Thank you for all your hard work, and I hope to go Plan C if the numbers continue. Wear your masks.
Thank you. Amy?
Hi, I have two children in the school district, one at Morro Bay High School and one going into Looms for his first year. I have homeschooled my younger child in fourth grade. I can honestly say it's a huge burden. The way we went last year, it was a really big burden. The only thing I can say is, can we please make any decision, whatever decision we can as soon as possible? Because this, our teachers need to be able to put up a lesson plan that works, not something last minute. I know, and I can probably say for all of our teachers, they love our children. They want to be in class with our kids. They want to have the time and get to know them each, each individually and in person. I don't think anybody is saying that's any different. I do think that our teachers do need to have a big consideration of what their health is going to look like with these kids in classrooms. I don't like the homeschooling option, but if that's where we need to go and that's where we need to start, then I think that's where we should start. The school gave us an option of an online learning, a distance learning option. Option all year. I don't like that. I'd love to put in the homeschooling option for the beginning, and then as we start to reopen, switch back into the system. So like I said, I would personally like to see us all just make a decision and then be able to slowly reopen up our schools and get us back to where our kids are fully socially connected with one another. I know my high school kids, my son and his friends, they're not social distancing at this point. And I do think that there's a difference between your upperclassmen and your, your little kids. Our bigs and our littles definitely need two different considerations at this point. Thank you.
And that's seventy-two thumbs up and seven thumbs down.
Maddie?
Hi, I am a teacher in San Luis Coastal, and I just want to say that I'm in favor of Plan C. We know as teachers that in-person learning is obviously the best option for our children's learning. However, my health, the health of your child, and the health of this community is more important than your child being at a physical school. However, this pandemic has exposed cracks and inequities in our society as well as our schools. How schools were before the pandemic was not the greatest. Going, quote-unquote, "back to normal" should not be our goal. Instead, let's focus on our health first and then work down to break down the inequities that have been the building blocks of our education system. The inequities that we saw during distance learning were always there. We can instead focus our energy on reimagining something better for our, our kids and our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ninety-nine thumbs up and six thumbs down.
Thank you. Nicole?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name's Nicole, and I have two children at Baywood Elementary, one going into fourth grade and one going into Kinder. And my biggest concern is that my daughter that's going into Kinder will be going into a dual immersion school now. And what does that look like as far as not going back? And what does that look like as far as not going back and trying to learn Spanish from home with no real help? I was not a big fan of how the virtual learning went at the end of the year. I don't think, I know it was last minute and the teachers were doing the best they could, but my son was not very successful with that. It was very hard to get him to try and do anything without a fight. So I am for going back to school with whatever guidelines we have to implement. I think it's super important for the students to have that interaction with each other, with their teachers, and to not fall behind for future grade levels. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Go ahead. Let me see. It's 47 thumbs up and 56 thumbs down.
Carrie?
Hi, my name is Carrie and I have two children in elementary school in the district. I wanted to speak briefly to the issue of children with disabilities. I have one child who is neurotypical and one who is not. And distance learning for us was extremely challenging in the spring. I think it was challenging for many, many people. But from what I've heard from particularly children with IEPs, children with disabilities, this can be an extreme struggle. So I want to know more about two things. I would, I would encourage the district to really honor their commitment to equity by communicating with parents about, number one, what is the scientific or evidence basis or expertise that's being referenced in developing these distance learning plans for children with disabilities? And then second, support by paraeducators. I would like the district to specify what that can look like in a distance learning environment. Our experience was that we did not get any information or adaptations for my child with an IEP. I had to initiate that. The only support we got from the para that we knew from the classroom in the prior trimesters was an offer to be on additional Zoom meetings, which was harmful rather than helpful because Zoom was very, very difficult for my child due to her disabilities. So I would, I would like to hear more about what researcher or expertise is being investigated to figure out how to make online learning a success for kids with disabilities. And I would like there to be consideration of children with disabilities for any possibilities of hybrid or kind of smaller group in-person learning in the context of a larger Plan C. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's 70 thumbs up and nine thumbs down.
Thank you. Carla?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak and I really do appreciate the thoughtfulness that you are putting into this school reopening plan. I understand that my perspective is unique as I have an incoming kindergartner into Pacheco. And we don't have the context of the distance learning from last year. But I do really feel backed in the corner that I need to choose between the safety of my student and teachers and staff versus opting to participate in the Pacheco program, which has been a huge priority for our family. So my first request is that you do make that decision today so that time and energy can be put towards resources to support what I anticipate is the curriculum for the Pacheco in Baywood School that was not available when we were asked to select distance learning from the get, from the get-go or else we would have to forego an education at Pacheco. And the other thing is that I wanted to see if there was a way to consider what some have mentioned in the past, previously today, about maybe bringing the kindergarteners on in a safe way to be able to kind of establish a connection with teachers and students as, like I said, they have not been in that setting before. And then another thing is seeing if there's a way for the distance learning to be consistent across sites for elementary schools so that families can come together to support each other and maybe do homeschooling in very small kind of social bubbles, especially where childcare is a challenge. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right, we're...
63 thumbs six. Oh, sorry about that. 63 thumbs up and 11 thumbs down.
Thanks, Jeremy. So that was our last request for public speaking. I'd like to take a break until 2:30. Jeremy, can you, oh, someone just popped up. Amy? And then after that, we're going to need to take a break, so...
Walt is also shaking his hand as well.
Okay. Is Amy online?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for putting together such a wonderful plan. I don't envy any position that you guys are in right now because you're going to have people that are going to be upset across the board, one way or another. But I do feel that the kids can go back to school in a safe manner. I know some teachers are worried and if they live with immunocompromised people, precautions can be taken. Hopefully the statistics are looked at as far as the death rate. And hopefully any, any and all precautions can be taken so that kids can go back in a safe manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to close public comment now. We're going to take a break. And when we return, the board will have its discussion. So let's go to, set to 2:35 now. Jeremy, is there anything the public needs to know about? Do they managing this?
No, just, just hang on and we'll be back at two, yeah, sit back 2:35. And if you don't want to be in a Zoom meeting the whole time, we're also streaming on our YouTube channel as well. So you have that option as well if you're from the public.
Okay, thank you very much.
Everybody from the public, this is Jeremy Kelish. We're just taking a quick break. It'll be a couple more minutes to 35 is when we come off the break. So just be patient with us.
Madam Chair, I would note.
I believe we're ready to begin again. All right, it was brought to my attention on our break that I inadvertently skipped one written comment, so I'm going to read that now and that we will then be closed for public comment for this item, but that was my mistake. This is Jason in Erin Healthman. Thank you immensely for your time and hard work, especially during the past five months. We recognize very difficult decisions continue to be made. We respect how heavily this must weigh on each of you. We have two daughters in elementary grades within the district. They both are in general education classrooms with IEPs and have various services, including various cohorts while at school. We would have prepared our kids attend school brick and mortar. Their IEP services are definitely meant to be occurring in person amongst their peers and the caring patient supportive specialized staff they work with. However, their health and safety as well as that of the entire staff on their school site is too valuable to risk. We also have high risk within our household due to a medical condition. We had been considering and leaning towards the district virtual learning plan, yet the reasons the virtual plan isn't viable are: One, our daughters seriously need the continued social connections to their school sites, peers, staff, and community. Two, their IEP services would very likely be even more negatively affected with this plan and extremely difficult to navigate with new staff. They need at least some familiarity for engagement. Three, the long hours sitting in front of a computer for any child is hard, but for those with unique needs, it is even more of an obstacle. Please consider Plan C for the fall. Also provide an option to enroll in the virtual learning plan should in-person school resume at a time throughout the school year. Distance learning will be difficult for our family as it will be for many other families in varying degrees. IEPs will need to be amended, but we will continue to advocate diligently for them. We hope that with this time in the next five weeks, we can plan ahead to have solid and meaningful programs for our daughters. We wish this for all families of students with IEPs or 504s. Let's move forward now in preparing for Plan C. It's absolutely crucial to provide teachers and other staff time to plan proactively. Let us parents help them in any way we can. We're all a team and need ample time to prepare for a successful season. There will be struggles for everyone and hardships for many. We implore the district to come up with frequent, ongoing, various ways to reach out to our most vulnerable students and families. If committees are needed to help with any aspect of this, we're certainly there would be willing, we're certain there would be willing parent and community volunteers, ourselves included. While we'll lack the physical in-person interactions, we can still build up our school communities and foster stronger connections and support for everyone. Okay, so we're going to come back now to the, our board discussion. Dr. Prater, did you want to speak to the plan before we get going?
I do. Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer and members of the board. I have a summary that I'd like to share with you and then transition quickly to Mrs. McGrath, who will briefly go through the core document, just the key points, so we're all really clear about what we're saying. And then I would like to read the recommendation to you and then allow for the board to have discussion. On March 16th, 2020, school closures began in San Luis Coastal and across California. By March 18th, two days later, we began a full distance learning program in our district. We are proud of this response and we're among a small handful of school districts across the state to accomplish this educational response so quickly. I couldn't be more proud of our staff, our teachers, our support staff, our administrative team, in the way they handled themselves and the way they responded. We are a learning organization and remain committed to making improvements whenever possible. Last spring was not perfect, and we've gained tremendous insights from parents, students, teachers, and administrators regarding how to improve the distance learning model in the future in particular. April and May, we began to form focus groups to determine how to reopen schools come August. During this time, we used the best available information to develop reentry plans that reinforce safety while getting our students back in their seats, as this is our core mission. Extensive protocols were developed and expert feedback was provided to our team during this time. That was April and May. In June, the CDE, California Department of Education, and the California Department of Public Health provided us guidelines to school districts to safely reopen schools. At the heart of the CDE guidelines were recommendations of social distancing at a minimum of six feet, wearing face coverings, and washing hands, screening staff and students, and limiting access to nonessential people while at school. The carve-out language in these guidelines said, "wear practicable." During June and July, San Luis Coastal scheduled six board meetings to review the reopening plans, gather feedback from the public, and modify plans as needed. The evolving nature of these plans reflect that feedback over the last six weeks. During the early part of July, COVID-19 infection cases began to accelerate in California and specifically in San Luis Obispo County. The state metric of 100 active cases per 100,000 residents in any county would place them on a watch list. This watch list and corresponding metric is designed as a warning, which leads to the re-closure of specific businesses deemed risky. This is why I selected this metric as part of the recommendation. I had searched for a metric. I had asked those in our county and across the state for a metric that I could land on or metrics, and no one was willing to put one out there. And an analytical response is something I'm after, and so selecting that singular metric was something that made sense to me. Realizing the governor is going to come out tomorrow with his own reopening message and corresponding metric, feel free to modify my recommendation accordingly. When writing the recommendation on Friday, July 10th, last Friday, Slow County had 140 active cases per 100,000 residents. This is why I wrote the recommendation before you. However, as of today, Slow County has 167 active cases per 100,000 residents. Clearly, we are going in the wrong direction. Health and safety must be our priority as we make decisions to reopen our schools. Bringing hundreds of students and staff together right now seems irrational and inappropriate, given the likely transmission in such environments, even under controlled circumstances. My recommendation before you reflects this sentiment, but allows for ongoing analysis and modifications as we continue. I believe that as we move along in the coming weeks and months, we'll become more clear as to where we need to modify and adjust our existing plans. But right now, because we need to make a decision in order to plan effectively for the reopening of school, whether it's in distance learning or in person, we need to make a decision. I also recognize the tremendous burden distance learning places on our families and students, not to mention our staff. Our team is committed to addressing the profound issues that this model creates, such as learning loss and engagement, social emotional needs such as depression, anxiety, drug abuse, neglect, childcare for working families, meal services, and extracurricular programs. Health and safety, education, and meeting the needs of the whole child makes this a complex and unsatisfying recommendation. I recognize what is before you, and I believe it is the correct recommendation, given the information we possess. Could I have chosen a different path? Maybe. Could I have been more detailed in some of those opening plans? Certainly I could have. But what is really before you today, if we are selecting that metric, which I think is the best we got right now, then I would suggest that we begin our year in a distance learning model, and we not only continue to monitor, but we do something else. We commit to a distance learning model through the winter break. And the reasons for that is that I feel strongly that we need to get this distance learning piece right, and our teachers need time to develop the consistency needed to make sure that is done well. Senate Bill 98 makes it clear that the expectations and the bar for how we do distance learning or any in-school learning has changed, and I honor and respect that. It will require a lot of cooperation and collaboration with our labor teams, and I'm optimistic that we can do this. With that, during that time, I also recognize that we can do small group intervention, small group, very tactical instructional models while at site in person for our most vulnerable populations of students, special education, English learners, and students that simply are not engaging on the online platform. I also believe we need to work with our cities of San Luis and Morro Bay, as well as the YMCA and other nonprofits, to consider ways to bring childcare services to our families and staff. That is yet to be determined, and it will be based on your decision today. At this moment, I'd like for Mrs. McGrath to talk briefly about the core document, so that we're really clear about what we're saying, and then I will read the recommendation before you. Kim, you are on mute.
She should have the ability to unmute herself now.
There we go.
Go ahead, Kim.
Thanks. Mandy, are you able to share the document? Thanks so much. So today, I would love to go over with you quickly. This is the recommendation document here, so I'll go over that and then just the core document that we would ask for your approval for today. So this is Dr. Prater's recommendation that he just went over with you, looking at the metrics of 100 for every 100,000 that would put in the distance learning model. We're also hearing that we may have information from the governor tomorrow that gives kind of similar information, although we haven't heard any official word. What we're in right now, that information is changing rapidly. But we're expecting to hear something kind of similar, and what we're hearing is that he may be recommending that if districts would need to be off the county monitoring list for no less than two weeks. So we will see what is said tomorrow, but we are expecting to hear something similar along those same lines. If we could look at the summary core document, thank you. So this document, we are asking for your approval of today. As you know, we have been diligently working on the reopening document, which is the very large, very detailed document that will likely forever stay in a draft mode, because we're constantly adding to it, constantly learning, and constantly adjusting that to meet our needs. This core document is different. So it is just quick summary information. So all of the information here, I have gone over with you in the probably three previous meetings prior to this one. So there is no new information in here. It's just grabbing just the core summary, most important pieces for your approval. So I will just give you a few highlights. It begins, obviously, with talking about reentry, talking about our need. It talks about the information from Dr. Prater here at the beginning, and then it's opening statement from him. And then it begins with looking at the plan options. So one of the things to consider is that we understand that if we're starting in a distance learning plan here in August, when we come back, we have been planning for all of the different plans, because we understand that we may be coming back into a Plan B, and then may ease into a Plan A, etc. So the planning work is incredibly important at all of the levels. So you will see here noted the different plan levels, and this would give Dr. Prater that ability to be able to move into these different plan levels as needed and as our metrics change. If you continue down a little further, you'll notice the different plan levels here. So just a quick summary. I know we've gone over this before, but normal would be what we were in pre-COVID. Plan A would be that all students are attending in person each day, and that we would have extensive safety measures in place. B1 would be the idea that you have students at that school there, but you are having a six-foot bubble. So a big difference there, where Plan A has reasonable spacing. B2 would have two different cohorts of students, because you need that six-foot spacing, and not always possible at some of the larger schools, where Plan C would be the full transition to distance learning. We all understand, and we've talked about the need to be flexible and nimble, and potentially moving back into one of those plans after coming out of a Plan C. If you continue down, this looks at many of the safety considerations and the guidelines and things that are used, such as the handwashing, hand sanitizer, gloves, face coverings, etc., that we've talked about, that would help to ensure that people are in a safe environment. If you continue down, we used a lot of different resources. So we have looked at information from many different places, and it has helped to inform this summary document. If you continue down there, Mandy, I believe we're at the end. So this afternoon, what we're asking is that this core summary document have your approval, of course, along with the recommendation. And as I stated earlier, the larger, really detailed document will be incredibly helpful for district staff and for all of us as we begin implementation, but not asking for your approval on the large document that will be more of a resource for us. So a big difference there, where Plan A has reasonable spacing. B2 would have two different cohorts of students because you need six, about six-foot spacing, and not always possible at some of the larger schools. Where Plan C would be the full transition to distance learning. Okay? We all understand, and we've talked about the need to be flexible and nimble and potentially moving back into one of those plans after coming out of a Plan C. If you continue down, this looks at many of the safety considerations and the guidelines and things that are used, such as the, you know, hand washing, hand sanitizer, gloves, face coverings, et cetera, that we've talked about, that, you know, would help to ensure that people are in a safe environment. If you continue down. We used a lot of different resources. So we have looked at information from many different places, and it has helped to inform this summary document. If you continue down there, Mandy, I believe we're at the end. So this afternoon, what we're asking is that this core summary document have your approval, of course, along with the recommendation. And as I stated earlier, the larger, really detailed document will be incredibly helpful for district staff and for all of us as we begin implementation, but not asking for your approval on the large document that will be more of a resource for us. Thank you.
Dr. Prater, you need... Hold on, I think you can... Let me see if I can do this.
There we go.
I'm back.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Sorry about that.
Sometimes I think you do that on purpose, but it's okay. What I would like to do now is preface my recommendation with some reasonable caveats. I wrote this a week ago, which is like a lifetime ago, and that's how quickly information changes. And like I had mentioned to you, we were searching for a metric that we could anchor ourselves to that would make sense, and that's why I selected this metric. Now, I also believe that, to be super clear, what I am asking for your approval on is to, given our current case count of COVID-19 in our county, and given the fact that we are on a watch list in the county, and coming back to school in any one of the hybrid models, B1 or B2, seems, like I said, irresponsible. And with that, at this time, and what I would suggest is that we commit to Plan C, the distance learning model, for our district and allow for limited onsite learning for our most vulnerable. Walt, I noticed you have your hand up.
You need to unmute. There you go.
Okay. So I guess what my question is, are you making a separate recommendation at this time rather than us considering voting on the resolution, which effectively would give you the discretionary decision-making to do what you're recommending anyway?
Yeah, thank you, Walt. Yes. What I'm asking is, what is written in this recommendation aligns with the resolution. The resolution gives me some flexibility, but I understand that some of these metrics might change come tomorrow with the governor, but I don't anticipate it changing this decision point. And so this recommendation before you basically says, I'm asking for approval of a distance learning plan for our district through winter break with the idea that if we have to come back in person, if we do decide to come back in person, that we would consider Plan B1 for elementary, Plan B2 for secondary, and know that we will continue to refine those models and continue to make them better as we move forward. That, in essence, is my recommendation.
Marilyn, did you have...
And I leave it to you.
Okay. Marilyn, did you have a question? Okay. Any other questions or discussion by the board? Mark, then Chris?
Eric, I have to... I'm a little confused at this point, so I'm gonna need some help. When we got the agenda packet, it said we were approving or we were going to be reviewing a reopening plan. When I look at the resolution, it calls for approval of the opening plan. We've gone through now five versions of what was called a plan up until this last one, which is called something else. So when I look at the overview that you're talking about, us approving now, let me see if I can find it. The core document, it's... And we put that in line with the resolution. I'm concerned that there's not enough detail in it to make me comfortable or that maybe others are not comfortable. So I'm just, just need to understand, are we going to change the wording in the resolution? I guess, what are we looking at today?
Well, what are you struggling with? Because I see it pretty clearly. B1, B1 is in the core document. It basically states that we will bring back students at the elementary level. Now, in that document, it just states, B1 is everyone comes back with six feet distance and masks and sanitizing and so forth. The B2 is the hybrid model, where it's like an AMPM. Plan C is the distance learning. So for me, I know that some of the nomenclature might have changed, but some of the information that has changed is the result of our previous five meetings. And so we've been trying to honor some of that feedback, which is why you're seeing it the way you are.
I suggest, if I can, just as an example, you had talked earlier about childcare. And for me, and I think for some, a lot of the board, that may be an issue, in the core document, the word childcare does not appear, whereas in the, what was the plan, it does. So I just, I have some concerns about the changing of what I feel like what we're approving. So I just need to share that.
Yeah.
I think I know where we're going, but, okay.
Yeah, childcare, like I said, childcare is an important element, but I did not put that in that particular plan because it's not directly part of how we're going to run school. It is a support provision, but it's not specific to opening a school under a B1 or B2.
Thank you. Chris?
I'm assuming this is a good time just to sort of talk about what we heard today, and first of all, to acknowledge the 500-plus people who are with us and the pretty close to 100 folks that made comments. It's interesting to me, I guess it's difficult for me. In my 35 years of education, I never thought I would be facing a day when I would be saying that we weren't having kids in school. In an article in Washington Post this weekend, the comments by a teacher were basically, there are no good choices that we can make. We can only make some choices that are not as bad as others. I absolutely support Plan C. I think that it is the most logical, reasonable, and safe plan that we can implement right now. And all my conversations with teachers, to a teacher, they all support Plan C. They understand and they want their children back at school. I want children back in school. But they also understand that there are dangers, and there are dangers not only to them and their families, but dangers possibly to other students, especially, I think, in the secondary schools. I want to focus for just a minute on special education. Obviously, we're going to have to really pay attention to special education. We're going to have to pay attention to our focus groups. And I know, Dr. Prater, you and the staff will be doing that. I will support this. And I just want to close with, as a special educator, my wife was a special educator in the district. This is the plan that I, as an administrator, would have wanted for my staff and my students. This is the plan that I, as a husband to a special educator in the district, would have wanted for my wife, who has an underlying medical condition, and for her students to have. I appreciate the flexibility that you're talking about. I think we are going to need to have some flexibility, and I think some of the comments today address those things. I will just close with thanking everyone again, and thanks to Dr. Prater. I think that the parents have spoken, I think the teachers have spoken about the need to act today, and I will support making the recommendation for today, not delaying it for two weeks. Thank you.
Anyone else at this time? Any other questions, comments? Mark? You need to unmute.
So I too want to support what Chris is saying, and I want to add, and I totally appreciate, I can't believe the amount of public participation we're having in government through Zoom and through this issue. It may be the one positive thing that comes out of all of this. I believe that San Luis Coastal staff are heroes, and it's everybody. They have always been first responders, more so now than ever. The amount of work that's been done is incredible. I have to think that some folks who felt that there's enough, there was responses where children are not as affected, and it's okay for them to get back to school. As I read all that and I looked at other information and research, it's clear that those kinds of comments were based on very early observations of what was going on and not necessarily data. And the comparisons to other industrialized nations, I have to say, those nations had smaller class sizes to begin with, and therefore, their rates of infection among children may have been lower. They had better equipment and better facilities to deal with it. If we want to compare ourselves to industrialized nations, then we have to bring that kind of finances into the public school system if we're going to keep trying to make those kind of comparisons. We heard today, yesterday, there was an article in Florida and Palm Beach, one-third of the children that were finally got around to testing came up positive. It's not an observation, it's just a fact. The doctors that are looking at that say that there's, even in asymptomatic children, the lung damage can just be huge, and it could be lifelong. The state has ordered millions of masks and face shields and other pandemic equipment for schools. I'm not sure whether we've gotten any yet, but it was only last week that they began to order face shields for children. And so I think reopening without having those types of equipment is wrong. So I just want to give my support to what Chris is saying and the opening under Plan C at this point. I don't think we're prepared to open. I don't think we have the metrics we need to make the decision.
Marilyn and Walt?
Thank you. I have been struggling, we've all been struggling, I think, with this issue. And I had come down on the side of distance learning or Plan C for now, and I'm glad that the majority of parents who spoke to us or wrote to us shared that same position. Part of my struggle has been about, we have, I think, 41%, at least 41% of our students are on free and reduced lunch. Another, perhaps, 20 or 30% of our students are two-wage earner families that cannot...
We're not babysitters!
That they can't afford not to work. So there is an equity issue, I think, here, and I'm glad to hear that we'll be looking into some kind of a childcare option, partnering in some kind of a childcare option. Perhaps with what we put in would be space, and others would provide personnel. So I totally get it. I understand there is a health issue. There's a health issue now for students, for all staff. We've heard from teachers today, but I know that we have other represented groups that are equally fearful and concerned. And so I think the best option at this time is to go to Plan C and distance learning and accept the recommendation, knowing that this is a plan we'll be putting on the shelf, and it's a living, breathing document, so that as new information comes forward, having to do with COVID and how it's transmitted and what it does, you know, that we will be able to adjust this plan moving forward. So when we do come out of distance learning and potentially implement it, it will be current and as effective as we can possibly make it. So I will support the recommendation.
Thank you. Walt? You need to unmute.
No, I need to unmute. Thank you. I've moved the recommendation of the superintendent to open schools on August 24th, option C.
Okay. We can have additional... Does someone want a second, and then we can continue our discussion? I see a hand up still. Chris?
I'll second Walt's motion.
Okay. Evelyn, you have a question or comment? You need to unmute, Evelyn.
Okay.
There you go.
One of the things that Dr. Prater was, kept referring to, and I too am going to support this, but when will parents, you know, if we're moving up the date and change the plan to make the recommendation active today, a lot of parents were asking about additional information regarding VLP and the DL. And so when can they expect that information to better inform their decision? I mean, I know, just, I know that's pretty pressing on parents' minds. Do we have information on that?
Yeah. Eric, you need to unmute.
There we go. Yes, so if we are to move the date from August 3rd to today, that's a two-week window that I was trying to give our families who were trying to decide on a virtual learning program, or do they want to stay with their homeschool or their neighborhood school and do distance learning? I don't believe they need two full weeks, but I do think they need and would like more information. And we are putting all of that together. Mrs. McGrath, Mr. Mayfield are available, and we'll push out more and more information to clarify those options. Now, especially for our seniors at Slow High, our juniors at Slow High who are accustomed to the trimester system, now would need to have some custom work done on their scheduling. And then for families choosing this decision, at least it would give them some time. I would like to suggest a one-week window as opposed to a two-week window for that decision to occur. And the reason is, is we have got to get our staffing done in order for this to work properly. So I would suggest July 24th, which is a week from tomorrow, for that deadline for the virtual learning program or the distance learning option. And to remind everyone, the virtual learning program is a commitment for a full year on a specific virtual learning platform, okay? With a set group of teachers that have been defined to do that work. It's not the same as the distance learning program with the school, the teachers assigned to school sites. So that's the difference. That would be the decision. Those choosing the virtual learning program would need to decide for the entire year. Those that are uncertain or feel like we're on the right path, knowing that we're going to modify this as we go, would decide the distance learning program. And so there's the difference, and we will push out information. So I would like a suggestion or recommend, I would recommend a shift from August 3rd to July 24th as a deadline for parents deciding on virtual learning or distance learning. Yes, Evelyn?
So, and we will push out information before that deadline, is what I'm hearing you say.
Yes. Mrs. McGrath, can you speak to that?
You're muted, Kim. Did you want to address it?
There you go.
There you go.
Each time Jeremy has to unmute, so you just have to pause for a second. Yes, Mr. Mayfield prepared really clear, you know, tons of clear... Yes, Mr. Mayfield prepared really clear, you know, tons of clarity and that is pushed out today in the parent and family communication that will be sent out from Parent Square today.
Evelyn?
Yeah, I'm sorry for asking. But the, one of the things that I think, and you referenced Dr. Prater, was the changes that both our teachers and families will need to be aware of regarding Assembly Bill 98 and some of those stricter guidelines. And will that kind of be included so families have that understanding of expectations? Or how does that work?
Yeah, no, that's an excellent question. The Senate Bill 98 makes it very clear that any distance learning have a minimum requirement of live instruction, synchronous instruction, and engagement as well as attendance each day of the week. So there are really strict requirements. That template will be coming out soon. But I can tell you in reading the bill, the Senate Bill 98, it's quite extensive. And it won't look like it did last spring for anyone. It will be far more robust, certainly more rigorous. And I think parents who were looking for that level of structure will be very happy. And for those families that don't want that structure, it'll be a bit challenging to be on this model.
Thank you. I'd like to go to Mark. He had a question, then Evelyn, I can come back to you if that's all right?
Perfect.
Okay, Mark?
Thanks. Eric, I appreciate the huge amount of work that went into this. And I appreciate your recognizing the childcare issue. I'm wondering if there's some way to have a commitment, and this happened once before in our past, where the district, I think, created a task force to work, let's say, to work with childcare providers, where the biggest impact on them. And that that task force would have a date specific, when they could get back to us and the public, so that there really is some kind of something solid for parents to kind of base decisions on about childcare. And I don't know whether I can, we just do this off the motion or on the motion, but...
Is this on the agenda at all, childcare provision?
No, so you're asking to change the, to amend the motion, Mark?
You know, I don't know whether we need to amend the motion. I remember back when we were going to cut summer school as a cost savings. And at that time, the board asked to ensure that meals were provided. And that was part of the discussion prior to a vote on the budget. And so I guess I'm asking for that same kind of discussion now and possibly a similar commitment.
Yeah, so Mr. Buckman, I so appreciate where you're going because the board did already commit to this. You guys approved a partnership with First Five. And First Five in coordination with Slow City, Slow County, More Obey, ourself, our district, to really examine the best way to proceed and build on a childcare model in our county, specifically in our school district. That they are working on that as we speak. Mrs. Ames is the liaison to that. Now, that is something the board has already committed to. That was pre-COVID. So that occurred back in December, the board, or November. But to your point today, I believe, you know, what I can tell you is childcare is going to be something that that the city, the county, myself, my team, were working on to try to develop so that families impacted by this, who have to work, can have an option. But that is yet to be developed. We have some time, at least between now and the start of school, to build that, put that in place. So I look forward to doing that. But short of that, I don't have that specifically in our recommendation.
So, and at this time, I would just like to set out before I do, I need to go back to Evelyn and then Chris, but that the motion itself is simply to approve the reopening recommendations for the 2020-2021 school year. So I just wanted to make that clear. And then Evelyn, and followed by Chris.
Well, I just wanted to just make a quick comment that with the focus on public health and safety for our staff and students, I too am going to be supporting Dr. Prater's recommendation. And I can, kind of going along with Chris, I too was hoping to see students in the classroom with teachers enjoying a full range of learning experiences. But, you know, here we are. So I think this road to reopen safely is going to be very complicated. And I have full confidence that with staff and with our teachers and the entire team that, you know, have the metrics. But, you know, all of our students need us, especially our most vulnerable. So I was happy to hear about those comments about trying to come up with some systematic and systemic way to help those students. And I think the one thing that this has shown me is that COVID has shown us that our schools are not isolated learning pods, but they're really dependent on the actions of our entire community. And I just want us to, you know, go forward and as we have the wisdom and tenacity to turn these challenges into wider options for students and that we can really learn and grow from this. And I want to thank all the parents for their question and staff who questioned and engaged because it's been... And also to really colleagues, custodians, food service workers, health people, everybody, and Dr. Prater and the parent's team for this effort because it's a monumental effort and we have to move forward with the recommendation in that manner. But thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
Yeah, just really quickly, I was just reminded of a comment that I believe a parent made and actually a teacher just made to me. And that is, we need to be assured that what we're working on is curriculum that can work across the school district, that will be in alignment with our report cards. And I think to be able to have our, give our teachers that extra couple of weeks to work on that. But I think that's going to be key, going to be very important to what we do. And I, perhaps Mrs. McGrath, you could comment on how we're planning on doing that. And again, I just wanted to thank everybody.
I know Catherine's waiting to comment, but I will gladly say that we do need planning time. And so, you know, teachers need time to be able to put best thoughts together for groups to come together and to look at best practices and for training to take place. And you're right, those would still be aligned to standards, still with, you know, rigorous expectations. And, you know, as Chris mentioned, which means aligned to report cards with grades and accountability and engagement, the very best that we can do in this environment.
Catherine?
I just would like to thank all the parents who took the time to write those very thoughtful letters and very helpful letters and also to speak out today at our meeting. It was very helpful to me to hear what they had to say. And also it just makes me reflect on the fact that I believe I should speak for all of us when I say that we know that this decision will add a layer of complexity to their lives and we're mindful of that. And I guess what I've just said from the beginning of this pandemic is that it would must error, let us err on the side of caution. So I believe that this is our decision today.
Thank you. Before I ask for a vote, I just, I wanted to just comment as well that I think, one of the things I found very interesting in reading letters from the public and going through the comments over the last couple of weeks is to be reminded that this ground is shifting constantly beneath us. That we received letters from people a week or two ago saying, "Open schools," and "This is what you need to do." And then some of those same letter writers, within the last few days, have written and said, "Never mind, never mind, Plan C. We support Plan C. You know, we need distance learning." Things have continued to change so rapidly. And I know that flexibility can be challenging, especially when trying to make plans with such a massive organization as a school district and parents' lives and kids' lives and all that we want to see happening. But this is where we are. This is just where we are. So at this time, I'm going to go to the vote. And we will do a roll call vote. Just as a reminder, the motion is to approve the reopening recommendations as presented to the board for the 2020-2021 school year. The motion was made by Mr. Malar, a second by Mr. Unger. And we will do a roll call vote. Mr. Malar? Oh, Dr. Prater, did you have something?
Yeah, just clarification that revised to be effective today, as opposed to August 3rd. That was a revision by Mr. Unger.
Can we handle that aspect of it by board consensus? Since it's not the, when parents have to make the election.
Yeah, I don't think that, yeah. And Mr. Buckman, did you have one more comment?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand. So we're voting on the verbal recommendation that we got? Or are we voting on the written recommendation? Because what's in documents? So I want to make sure we're voting on Plan C?
Mr. Malar, do you want, that's your motion?
That was my understanding from Dr. Prater recommending Option C.
Okay, so it's the verbal recommendation. Okay.
No, the verbal recommendation, no, the written recommendation states that, given our current situation, we're in Plan C through December.
Got it.
Right. Okay. Are we clear? This is an important matter. I want to make sure we're all clear. And Chris, you're clear with your second? Okay, Mr. Malar? Oh, Mr.?
Because the resolution contains within it the delegation of authority to Dr. Prater to follow the metrics indicated in the plan and put in place that option that fits that criteria. And clearly, it's pretty well agreed, it's Option C. So are we approving the resolution or are we approving something different?
The resolution, it's my understanding, the resolution is a separate agenda topic, which we will discuss next. So the plan is the document, the resolution will support the plan, ratifies it. So is my understanding, and I see... Do you stand by your motion? Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Malar, a second by Mr. Unger. Is there any more discussion before I do the vote? Marilyn?
Well, I just want to be sure that we are somehow incorporating the revised date by which parents need to make a decision about virtual learning. Is that incorporated?
Well, it actually came up after I made my motion, and I'm not sure we need to incorporate it. Why isn't it something that we can give guidance to staff to do?
I don't know that it needs to be part of the motion itself.
So we would just notify parents via Parent Square?
He's already been direct, Dr. Prater has already been directed to notify parents.
I'll do that today.
I just want to make sure there's nobody who's unaware of that change. That would be unfortunate. Okay, thank you.
Evelyn?
Sorry, I, so as the resolution, sorry. As the resolution is stated, is it including that it's current now, that we are, it's being effective now? I wasn't sure I heard that.
The resolution is our next agenda topic.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And Catherine? You need to unmute. Catherine, you can...
Or the recommendation.
So my question is, is it, it seems so though that this one sentence, two sentences, two and a half sentences, actually is the best description of what I've heard us talk about here. And I wonder whether that goes in to this vote or the next vote. But I do think it would be important for it to include the matrix and what is exactly written into this document that we all received. Would that be appropriate to be our motion?
But it's, it's already part of the plan. So if we're approving the plan, we're approving everything contained within it. I don't know that we need to set out specific parts of the plan in our motion.
But the plan says August 3rd. Do we want to change the plan to it says 7/16?
Mr. Malar, I'm going to come back to you. It's your motion.
I have no guidance to provide you.
Okay, if we have, if someone is...
Is the question about when parents have to elect for distance learning, it's being moved up? Or is the question that we're approving things now rather than August 3rd? I don't know.
So Eric, what's, I need to know your understanding.
Well, it would be, it would be very simple to revise the motion to modify what's written in there, just on two simple terms. One, it would be to approve the plan effective July 16th and not August 3rd. And allow parents, July 24th, to, who wish the deadline to select the virtual learning program. Those would be the two modifications to that. And I think we would land in the right spot consistent with the resolution.
Okay, Mark?
Again, I'm, when I look at the, when I look at the, I thought what we were voting on was the core development, the core document. And within the core document, there are no dates. I appreciate that it would, by the metric that it's in there, would allow the superintendent to work with as much fluidity as possible. But I keep hearing we're sort of bouncing back. So what I think the resolution was, was to approve the core document with the... Yeah, I don't know. Can you repeat the motion maybe? Because I'm really thinking we're way, all over the place.
Then make another one.
Okay.
Walter, I can make another one. You gotta do it the right way.
Yeah, you need to withdraw your motion and then we'll make a new one.
And I'll have to ask my second if you'll...
Okay, Chris, you're raising your hand.
Yes, yes, I think the proper way to do this would be for me or someone else to make a motion to amend Walter's motion, and then we'll take a vote on that. And if that's approved, then that becomes part of this motion. So I move to, I want to move an amendment to the recommendation, and that is to change the dates. Dr. Prater, can you repeat the dates for me again, please?
Yeah, July 16th for the option, Plan C, and July 24th for the deadline for parents to choose virtual learning program.
Okay, so the amendment to the motion, the amendment to the original motion is that we approve this for July 16th with parents making a choice by July 24th. I believe I would need a second for that. We'll take a vote on that and then we'll return to the original motion.
I'll second that. So, Mark?
Discussion on the amendment. Still hearing confusion between the term recommendation and the need for us to approve the plan. Because in our next, our next agenda item, we're going to be asked to approve a plan because that's part of the resolution, that we've approved a plan. I have no problem voting on both. But right now, I think if we vote on the recommendation, we're not going to be able, not going to be able to approve the resolution.
No, but Mr. Buckman, I think it's resolution to reopen schools, approve the district's reopening plan.
Right.
That is my recommendation. My recommendation is Plan C. And then if the metrics are not hit, then it's Plan B1, B2. That's the reopening plan.
Okay.
So we have a... So we have a we have a motion by Mr. Unger, a second by me to on the approval of the amendment. So I'm going to do a roll call vote. I'll start with Chris. He made the motion.
Yes.
I made the second, yes. Ms. Evelyn?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Walt?
Yes.
Thank you.
I need I need to vote, Ellen.
Oh, Mark, I'm sorry.
No problem.
I don't know why people are moving around up there.
Yeah, I'm sorry, and I'm and I am in support as well, yes.
Okay, then we will return to Mr. Millar's original motion to accept, once again, the approved, the reopening recommendation for 2020-2021 that was seconded by Chris. Walt? Chris?
Yes.
All right, Evelyn?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And I vote in favor as well. All right. Phew, we did it. Okay. We will now move to our next agenda topic, which is the resolution approving the plan for the safe reopening of schools and to delegate emergency authority during the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic. Dr. Prater?
Yes, this resolution was developed by Mike Smith from Los Amos Smith as a formal document that will allow me to operationalize the recommendations you made. I'd also like to point out in Board Policy 2210, where it does say that that it authorizes the superintendent to take immediate action that is necessary to avoid any risk to the safety or security of students, staff, and district property. And and I just want to ensure the board that no, there there there's every intention of of me continuing this, bringing the board into the discourse and the conversation and in the decision-making. And and we'll continue to revisit this decision and the data that goes with it each month from here on into the foreseeable future. So you'll never be out of the loop, and you won't have a superintendent acting rogue on you. So this is just to reassure you.
Thank you. I do have one one written comment to read on the resolution, and then we will go to the we'll go to the public. This is from Michael Hane. I am glad that there is a resolution to move forward with in-person instruction at this time and that serious consideration is being given to what this format will look like and how to best balance educational and health concerns. While this resolution tries to address a changing COVID landscape by reserving the right to change the method of instruction, I would ask that the board and district consider the following. Single variable analysis of any distribution is incomplete at best, and the use of the county case rate alone as a go-no-go is a simplistic metric. If a single measure must be used, there are better choices available, even something as simple as the 017 county case rate. Nonetheless, I would encourage the use of a greater number of factors if some numerical algorithm is the basis for a change of course. Also, while numerical assessments are useful tools, they can also serve as a means of abdicating the responsibility of difficult decision-making. In this case, I believe we do need those in decision-making positions to exercise their judgment while taking into account the available information. That is their job. Otherwise, we would task these decisions to relatively simple computer programs and perhaps save money in the process. Additionally, I would encourage the board and the district to be wary of claims that the science says that in-person instruction is or is not the correct way to proceed at this time. Users of that phrase tend to consider a single facet of an issue when making such a pronouncement, or they are unclear about how science works. What is clear is that children attending school in person or not will have a significant impact in our community. Finally, I would ask the board and district to consider that this virus could remain a presence in our daily lives. With its higher transmissibility and long incubation periods, it will be very difficult to wait it out. While I hope for a vaccine, the odds seem low that difficult evaluations and decisions on reopening or remaining open can be avoided in the year to come. If this resolution is not approved, I hope that it is not because it was easier to kick the can down the road. Thank you for your consideration. I'm going to open it to the public, but I'm going to be very clear that we do not want repetition from everything we heard before. I don't see anyone waiting at this time.
Wait, yeah, we have a few people waiting at this time.
Okay, Katie, and please don't, we've had a really long meeting, so I would really ask you to bear with us here. Katie?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I really, really appreciate all the hard work that everybody's put into and thankful for the decision you've made with with Plan C as both a teacher and a parent of a Stanley West Coastal Unified School student. And like was said earlier, we don't have the best choices to make. We just have to make, you know, the best one under circumstances. I'm wondering if it's possible to reevaluate the decision for the parents to make between virtual and distance learning in December if the school then decides to go to Plan B in January? I realize that it's a staffing, I'm sure, multitude of challenges, but wondering if that's possible, especially for students that are in the bilingual programs and parents and families who are trying to balance the decision between health and their education, the child's education? Wondering if it's possible to reevaluate between virtual and distance learning in December if the school then goes to Plan B in January? Thank you very much.
Are you, Jeremy?
Yeah, I'm right here. Sorry, 15 thumbs up, one thumb down.
Sue?
Hi. Um, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I would, I was asking a sort of a similar question to the last one, but would like some clarification on what happens when we finally, as a district, feel that it's time to move to Plan B? But if an individual family, such as my own or any other, decide that they are feeling like the risk is still too high? If the virtual learning program is full, does that mean we pull our kids to homeschool? Or could there be some sort of?